Okay, well, thank you everyone for being here. Welcome, this is the regular city council meeting of the Flagstaff City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 1st. It is 3 o'clock, I like to call this meeting to order. Also, I need to provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice should we so choose to do so. With that, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Evans.
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Present.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present on this giving Tuesday.
Councilmember Whelan.
Present.
Thank you so much. Ms. Whelan, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I sure would, thank you Mayor. Everyone stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan. Vice Mayor, would you like to read our mission statement?
Absolutely, thank you Mayor. The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you Vice Mayor. We are now down to item number four of our agenda. Item number four is for public participation. Public participation is for items that are not currently on our agenda. While council can listen and receive feedback, because the item has not been agendized, we cannot respond to anything we might hear. The clerk has indicated that we do not have anything for public participation at this time. So we're going to go ahead and go down to item number five. Item number five is appointments. First up with item number five in our appointments would be consideration of appointments to our Indigenous Commission. Staff recommended action at this time that we make two appointments to terms that are expiring December 2021, that we make two terms for, or two appointments for terms expiring December 2022, that we make three appointments to terms expiring December 2023, and that we make three appointments of ex-official members from the Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council. So we'll go ahead and start that. We're going to go in the rotation that was listed on our council agenda. I'm going to start first with Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to appoint Jonathan Yellowhair for a term expiring in December 2023.
Is there a second?
I second that.
The motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Mr. Aslan to appoint Jonathan Yellowhair to a term expiring December 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Mr. Aslan?
Yes, I would like to make an appointment for Joe Washington to the same three years term expiring in December 2023.
So Joe Washington? Is there a second?
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Aslan and a second by Mr. McCarthy to appoint Mr. Joe Washington to a term that expires December 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We are now going to go to Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you Mayor, I move that we appoint Shawna Whitehat to a term expiring in December of 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mrs. McCarthy, I believe the second came from Mr. Aslan, to appoint Ms. Shawna Whitehat to a term expiring December 2023. Is there any further discussion?
That second came from the Vice Mayor.
Okay, I apologize for that. If the clerk could point out that that second came from the Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, can I like to make a motion to port appoint Dorothy Gishy to the last one, which is to make the three appointments to ex-official members to the Indigenous Peoples Advisory Community or Council?
Is there a second?
Second, McCarthy.
Been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard with a second by Mr. McCarthy to appoint Dorothy Gishy to an ex-official spot on this particular commission, oh, there's, excuse me, this particular advisory council. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you Mayor. Just wanted to say how excited I am to see us putting together this commission and to our Coordinator of Indigenous Initiatives, Rose Toki. Thank you so much for your work on this and the work ahead. Very exciting reading all the applications and to all the applicants, thank you. I'd like to appoint Cora Phillips to an appointment, to a seat expiring December 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion made by the Vice Mayor with a second by Mr. McCarthy to appoint Cora Phillips to a term that would expire December 2022. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you Mayor, I'd like to appoint Kiara Weathersby. I believe there's another 2022, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Kiara Weathersby for 2022.
Is there a second?
Okay.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan with a second by the Vice Mayor to appoint Kiara Weathersby to a term that would expire in December 2022. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. I have the next appointment. I'd like to appoint Courtney Scott to a term that would expire in December 2021. Can I please have a second?
Second.
McCarthy.
So I made the appointment for a Courtney Scott to be to be appointed to a term that expires December 2021. I believe the first second came from the Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. I'm going to go back to Ms. Salas, Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we still have one more spot for an appointment expiring in December 2022. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
2021 is the last one that we have.
So, let me see.
I think there is one more spot for 2022.
Yes.
I have two, yeah.
No, there's only two appointments, nevermind.
Yeah, so the only spot that's left available would be for December 2021 are the ex-official spots we have too.
Okay. Because in my notes, we have appointed three with term expiring December 2023. We have appointed two with terms expiring December 2022.
Yeah, we only have two appointments to be made. There's two spots available.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you for that clarity, Mayor. So, I am, I'm to appoint Ms. Meg Kabody Adakai for the ex-official spot.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by the Vice Mayor to appoint Meg Kabody Adakai, someone might have to pronounce it for me correctly, please, to a ex-official spot. I see that the Vice Mayor has a comment? Okay. Okay. We have a first and a second, is there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, the Vice Mayor made the second.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, we have one position left, correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, we have an ex-official position and we have an appointment.
Okay, well, I'd like to make an appointment for Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff Board Member Fon Toya.
Is there a second?
One of the 2021 terms.
This is Charlie's second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Aslan with a second by Mr. Odegaard to appoint Fon Toya to a term that would expire December 2021. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you Mayor, I would, before I make this, I would just like to say I reviewed all of these applicants carefully and I was very impressed at the quality of the applicants and also that there is diversity, they're not all from one tribe and that's good. So, I would like to make a motion to make an appointment for an ex-official member from the Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council and that person would be Diana Kudel. If I'm, or Kudel, I'm not sure how it's pronounced.
Is there a second?
Yes, for Diana Kuday, I think.
Kuday? So there's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Aslan to appoint Diana Kuday to an ex-official spot on this advisory council. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to say my pronunciation was off because those eyes look like L's without my glasses.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. I am very excited to say that we have established our Indigenous Commission for the City of Flagstaff. We are now down to item number six. Item number six are our liquor license public hearing. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time for 6A, that is our only public hearing. This is consideration action on liquor license. This has to do with Teresa June Morse for Flag Tor, I apologize. It's located at 17 North San Francisco, number 2A. It's a Series 10 beer and wine, it's a new license. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing to receive input and then the city council can decide their next steps.
Madam Mayor, it's pronounced Flag Tarrar.
Thank you, Tarrar. I gave up as soon as I saw it, Flag Tarrar, thank you. So at this particular time, do we have our officer available?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Ryan Turner of the Flagstaff Police Department. I wanted to mention that after I had submitted my report, I was provided evidence that one of the applicants had provided evidence that they completed the management and liquor law training and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and I believe the applicants are also present as well.
I do believe that the applicant is present because I see someone on our video at this particular time. Does council have any questions for the applicant? Council does not seem to have any questions for the applicant at this time.
I apologize, I'm still getting used to this new tool ball, tool bar for the chat.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to, you're not changing location, are you? You're still there at Roslyn Creoyo?
That is correct, we're just trying to be in compliance with the law since we can't open due to COVID-19, we're trying to get a package store sort of license.
Okay, well, I wanted to mention to you, Doug, that I I've presented that establishment in the past, I really enjoy it. I think it's a really nice amenity for downtown Flagstaff and appreciate your selection of board games that you guys have on hand as well as your nice selection of wines.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to go to Ms. Salas who has a question.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, kudo to the owners and operators of Flag Tarrar for pivoting, you know, changing business model into selling wine and beer, which explains this application for a Series 10. I'm curious, should your License 10 be approved and then your License Series 7 would be inactive, granting that you will be able to open to serve food and beer and wine eventually after the pandemic? Is that, is that in your long-term goals? To open up again when it's safe?
That is correct.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if there's another question.
I don't have a question, I do have a comment. I just want to tell Doug, thank you. You know, right now, we see many of our small businesses are going through epic challenges when it comes to COVID-19 and the fact that you are still here, that you're still downtown, that you still are, as Ms. Salas said, pivoting and doing what you can to remain open and be a part of our, not only our economy downtown, but quite frankly, part of our our environment and our city, the fabric of it. We greatly appreciate the fact that you are doing that and that you're willing to do that.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I could not say the name of your establishment, but I've been in it many a time.
Madam Mayor, this is Teresa Morse. I'm the agent, hello, Vice Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing us to meet this afternoon virtually. And I wanted to commend the owners and the manager for their due diligence in searching out the state statute for the correct procedures on this. And it sounds as though, although I have not been to the establishment, they are on top of everything and I wanted to commend them. I'm a retired police officer and served 13 years at State Liquor. So somehow or another, they got to me and that's why I'm agent on the license at this point. But they are very knowledgeable and want to comply with all city, state, and county laws and I wanted to ensure that you had that information and it sounds like you do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you Mayor. I have a question that might be for our police officer or maybe for Ms. Morse. And the question is, if they get this new license under the rules of the state, do they have to turn in their old license or can they just keep both licenses?
This is Teresa Morse and the Series 7 license has real property value. It will continue to be owned by the current owners and it will be placed on inactive status by myself down at State Liquor in Phoenix. They can hold that for 36 months inactive. It accrues fees, of course, after five months. However, once COVID-19 hopefully will go away for good, then they will surrender their Series 10 license and utilize their Series 7. Now, as you know, the Series 7 has package-to-go privileges as well as the 10. However, the 10 does not allow for consumption on premises. So, there is a stipulation in this Title IV state statute, Arizona Revise Title IV, that requires them to only allow 30% of their package to go on the 7. So that is why this moved to the Series 10.
Right, so as far as closing out the old license, you answered my question, there's pros and cons to it, but that's up to the company. Thank you very much.
I'm going to go back to Councilmember Salas. Well, actually, before I do that, I'm going to go ahead and close this. Is there a call to the, I'm going to do a call to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak particularly on this particular license? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing and I'm going to move to Ms. Salas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again. Kudo to Flag Tarrar. I have, I have been a fan even before it was Flag Tarrar and it was the Wine Loft. And yes, the Wine Loft and with the changes of ownership and with, I remember there was a remodel, but there was one thing that was constant with this business. It was, it is. Mr. Frederick Wischkliwicz, who's, you know, the bartender parsoness who supports local musicians and local artists as well, which has been displayed in the many years that Flag Tarrar has been in business and must open for dining and serving great beer and wine. So I, I am, I'm honored to make a motion to forward this application to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Is there a second?
And this is Charlie here and I'll provide the second.
So there's been a motion made by Ms. Salas with a second by Mr. Odegaard to forward this application to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to move down to item number seven. Item number seven is our consent items. It looks like we have public comment cards for item number 7C. So I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion for item number 7A.
This is Charlie and I'll provide that motion.
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made for item number 7A and this is a magistrate for the Flagstaff City Municipal Court. The action would be to approve the judicial appointment of Amy Cridle as magistrate. Is there a second? Excuse me, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're down to item number 7C. This is consideration adoption. This is Flagstaff's Live Black Experience Strategic Plan. Staff recommended action is that we adopt the Flagstaff's Live Black Experience Strategic Plan. I'd like to go ahead and go to the public comments that we have.
Go ahead. This is Miss Deborah Harris.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm just Deborah Harris, Southside Community Association and I'm calling in support of item 7C, the Live Black Experience. I'm asking that the city council members go ahead and adopt that strategic plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Harris? Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Okay, Ms. House, you can go ahead and speak to council now, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kara House and I'd like to say thank you to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I am speaking in support of adopting the Live Black Experience Strategic Plan. As shown during the presentation to council last week, this is a living and long overdue document and as one council member stated, a necessary leg on the stepping stool towards progress in Flagstaff. The Black community of Flagstaff has overwhelmingly expressed the sense of invisibility within this community we call home and help to build. Today, I urge you to take this important step in making visible the invisible and recognizing the valuable historic and ongoing contributions of Black Flagstaffians to the city's past, present, and future. This is an important step, an historic step, and it's one step in the long journey ahead. I thank you for your willingness to take this step and keep Flagstaff moving forward toward a better, brighter, and more beautiful community. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. House? Thank you, Ms. House.
Ms. Vicki Finger, could you please start?
Thank you. Madam Mayor and City Council, my husband Steve and I participated in the last three town hall meetings on economic inclusion, race-based segregation, mental health and behavioral health, plus several of the Live Black Experience presentations. And I want to express our strong support for this strategic plan that grew out of the community conversations. There are a couple of quotes in the plan that express my support. One of them is, "It is important to understand that culture is central to community development. The absence of cultural representation in community development suggests something is missing." End of quote. I think something is missing in Flagstaff. I felt enriched by my experience and as a community, we would be enriched if the goals of this plan were achieved." Another quote was, "Two key words that stood out to forum participants in the discussion of economic inclusion and impact were visibility and intentionality. This strategic plan includes many ways to increase visibility through representation and celebration. An adoption of the plan will go a long way toward giving structure and power to our intention to have a community inclusive of Black people and Black culture. I also think that adopting this plan goes hand in hand with other goals that the council has already supported, such as affordable housing, the Southside Community Development Plan, and the Climate Crisis Declaration. We ask you to support this community's strategic plan."
Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ricardo, you can go ahead and speak now.
Okay, thank you, I muted my other phone, thank you so much. Good afternoon, this is Ricardo Garcia. I'm pleased to address the Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to again add my support to the Black Community Strategic Plan, which is ready for vote by the City Council. I support implementation of the plan and encourage a trial period to get the project off the ground, to attract additional funding, and to build a collaboration between the city and the Black community. As I mentioned before, it's ambitious, but it's realizable to help acknowledge the contributions of Flagstaff's Black community while providing some clear avenues for the city to support the neighborhoods in which we live. So, the three things that I'll just quickly say, if we use this plan to help develop jobs and affordable housing and homeownership, we can stabilize the community in ways that are currently unattainable. Second, I still support the city commissions and all the initiatives that address systemic racism and seek to change Flagstaff's racial climate for the better. There's some clear examples of how this works already and I'm sure we can build on that using this plan. And third piece is, I'm on Zoom right now to rebuild Flagstaff, the Black neighborhoods by encouraging community leadership. Let the majority partners in our own future rather than being wards or or supporters who have to listen to what the city says. We did it, and it's powerful because it really does tap community sentiment and provide ways that support dignity, respect. And so for these reasons, I urge you to give the plan its affirmative vote, and we move forward from today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Guthrie. Counsel, are there any questions for Dr. Guthrie? Well, thank you. I'm gonna go back to Councilmember Aslan, Mr. Aslan.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Guthrie, and thank you to all the speakers today and throughout the months leading up to this. Without further ado, it would be my great honor to recommend that we adopt the Flagstaff's Lived Black Experience Strategic Plan.
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Aslan with a second by Mr. McCarthy. Adopt the Flagstaff Lived Black Experience Strategic Plan. Further comments, Mr., excuse me, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment and also express gratitude to the call, the public individuals who have called in and have worked tirelessly to see this plan through. I'm very glad to see us as a council body adopting this plan, but this is where the hard work begins, right? And so I hope that you all and everyone else involved stay involved and help us see this plan through in the coming weeks, months, years. And I look forward to helping as well. Thank you.
Are there any other comments by council? Not seeing any. There's been a first and a second. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi. Bye.
Are there any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number eight. These are routine items in the Flagstaff City Council. The first one is item number eight A. This is consideration and approval. Artist contract for the downtown library entry project with Jones Studio Inc. for seventy-five thousand dollars. Staff's recommended action is that we approve this contract and we authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is Eliza Kretzman, Beautification Arts and Sciences Manager. I'm gonna turn on my camera just for a moment to say hello. It's great to see you all and to be here.
Hi, Eliza.
Hi, nice to see you, Vice Mayor. So we are before you today for approval for the artist contract for the downtown library entry project. Next slide. It's not forwarding. There we go. Thank you. So today I'll cover some new processes that the city is implementing for public art selection as well as, then I'll turn it over to Jana for the library entry artist contract and some more details related to that. Next. Next, please. So as I mentioned, the city is now implementing some new processes for artist selection, and these include bringing in more voices on artist selection panels and also bringing in artist-to-design teams earlier on for larger capital projects. And these changes are to even better align our work with current best practices in public art, and the library entry is a great example of these new processes. Next, please. So why have an artist as part of a design team? This allows for more contextualized art and beautification items as part of a larger project. The art may be functional as well as add aesthetic enhancements. And in some cases, the artistic perspective may influence aspects of the larger overall design as well. We see this as particularly appropriate when projects are funded by the bed, board, and beverage tourism tax art and beautification funds, which, as you know, are protected by ordinance for these purposes and affirmed by Flagstaff voters for these purposes. An additional note is that when artists are selected to join a design team, they are chosen based on past projects and work experience, much like when you're hiring an architect. Next, please. We are also increasing the voices on artist selection panels. In particular, we are creating specific panels for most public art projects to include more people from the community, in particular, from the neighborhood where the project will occur, as well as people with expertise specific to the project. So this increases the inclusivity and diversity of selection panels. Of course, our Beautification and Public Art Commission is still involved. They have several members on these panels, and final selections are still approved by the commission. Next, please. I will now turn it over to Jana Weldon to present the artist contract. Jana joined us in February and is a great asset to our team. She has over twenty years of public art experience and, in fact, brought these new processes to us that I just mentioned to you. So I will now turn it over to Jana. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliza, for that gracious introduction. I thought I would just turn my camera on for a minute to familiarize yourself with my face. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I, as Eliza said, I am Jana Weldon, your Beautification Arts and Science Project Administrator. I'm going to go over a little project background and then over the past projects and some aspects of the recommended artist. Next, please. We do want a process that best allows the artwork to organically amplify the redesign of the entry plaza, to make the entry a more beautiful welcoming space while also bringing the entry into ADA compliance. This is why we want the artist on early in the design. There's a symbiotic relationship that can take place. We want the space to embrace the art and the art to create community space. And we'll take the cue from the initial stakeholder discussions as a jumping off point. Next, please. This strong design team process gives the artist the flexibility to determine the type of artwork and to contextualize it, again, to make it seem like it came from the place, and that wasn't just plopped up there. So there's more opportunity to create a great community space. Next, please. Design team approach also includes early community input. We designed exercises to elicit people to speak in specifics and feelings, which artists are adept to responding to. And we like to do that before the artist even starts designing. Next, please. The needs of the project, as Eliza said, lead to specific choices in creating a selection panel. And this is some, the members of the selection panel for this project. Our Beautification and Public Art Commissioners are involved. Library stakeholders had a strong voice with three members, and the connection to downtown and art expertise was recognized as well. Next, please. And again, BPAC as a whole is still involved. The full commission reviews the process, and here's from the panelists before voting on their approval of the artist. Next, please. Following what we heard from the selection panel and from BPAC, staff recommends the approval of this contract of seventy-five thousand dollars for the design teamwork, for the public outreach, and for the creation of all art elements. The specific art elements are not yet known, but consider the possibilities of this entry plaza. We're doing some ADA ramps, new ADA compliant ramps. There could be artistic railing as part of that. There could be artistic seating. There could be mosaics on creation of walls. There could be something in the ground plane. There could be a surprising three-dimensional precious object. Whatever the artist brings forth in the design, this contract will cover the creation of those elements. Next, please. And so staff recommends that the contract is awarded to Jones Studio with principal artist Maria Salinger. This team was recommended over seven other qualified applicants. Next, please. The selection panel looked specifically for experience as a design team participant in past projects and found that with this applicant. Next, please. Maria impressed the selection panel with how she took an inventory of the whole site in her interview and was the only applicant to do so. Next, please. This team also has previous work with the aesthetics of Flagstaff, and that was a big consideration in their selection. You may recognize the new campus of the Coconino Community College that was also designed by Jones Studio. Next, please. As Eliza said, the applicants were selected on past projects, so they didn't present any concepts for this entry plaza to the library. Rather, the formal selection process highlighted past projects and how they approached them. Next, please. So for this Phoenix project called Highbrow, they looked to the desert and water-based flora, and they worked with the ever-present sun. And so they transformed this rather banal piece of infrastructure. Next, please. Into a rather dynamic artwork. The way the shadows change and reflect gives it a sense of motion and dynamism that it previously did not have. Next, please. This applicant's ability to create welcoming seating space, to work around existing plants, to work with sun angles impress the selection panel. Next, please. And they were shown that they were capable of thinking of an artistic approach to donor recognition. Maybe they can design something other than the traditional donor bricks. Next, please. The team also had experience in drawing directly from community input to create work. They started, for another project, they started with a community exercise. They asked the community to create different images. And, you know, so I, you know, obviously, they're very varied, but I draw your attention a little bit just to the flower and to the galaxy, the blue galaxy. And so the artist team kind of synthesized some of these, you know, visuals that the community gave by abstracting these elements. And next, please. So they came up with a final art piece. The component of the flower and the galaxy are still there in the final work. Poetry is added. Obviously, this is a functional piece, you know, because it's seating and shade. There's something for the viewer at a distance, and there's something else for those that sit within. Next, please. Jones Studio with principal artist Maria Jones demonstrated to the panel that they can make work that is specific to the location where they were working. What they did elsewhere, though, is not what they will do in Flagstaff, but they will use a similar approach in mining locality to create concepts for the library entry plaza. Next, please. Our public process, though, will give insurance that this comes to fruition. You will see, the council will see in a work session the concepts brought forth out of the design team. Public comment will be solicited and integrated and into design response. There still will be approval needed by BPAC. And if BPAC does not approve it, the contract has a clause that says that, you know, we can terminate. Next, please. So staff recommends this action. I welcome your questions and comments.
Counsel, are there any comments? Mr. Odegaard.
Yeah, the one question I didn't see answered was, how long has this project been in the works for bringing the entry, especially to ADA compliant?
Thank you, Councilwoman Odegaard, for your question. Given that I started in February, I'm not going to be able to answer exactly how long, and I might have to rely on Eliza Kretzman for that. But I will say that this was, when I started, this is one of the highest priority projects. It had been waiting, obviously, for staff to be able to implement. It had, you know, been in the five-year plan, and so we got moving on it. You know, procurement is a fairly long process from start to finish. So it was one of the first projects I began working on when I started on February 24th. But Eliza, maybe you could say how long it's been in the plans?
Actually, Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I can definitely answer that question. This has been a desire to fix the ADA issue that we have at the main library while installing some type of art project to enhance the entry of the library has gone on for over six years. Heidi Holland, who was our previous library director, had first brought this forward to our attention when she had it brought to her attention, I believe, from our facilities. And so we decided, because the library is somewhere people like to also sit outside on nice days, as well as sometimes they have to wait outside until we open, we wanted to make sure that we checked a bunch of boxes. And so our current library director, Jared Tolman, has already been to several of the other commissions to speak about design work and how to make it ADA compliant to be beneficial to them, as well as then started working with Carl Everhart and Mark DeLucido, who used to have the positions that Eliza and Jana now hold, to put the art part of this into it. And so it's been going on for over six years, and we're happy to start seeing some things happening. And we're also very excited for the possibility of checking a lot of boxes at one time.
Vice Mayor, I think you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Jana and Eliza and to Jones Studio, Maria, Ms. Hansen, everybody involved. Very exciting to see us talking about this and moving forward on this topic. You know, Heidi, you nailed my first bullet point, which is that this is a very high-utilized space and that this is an area where people congregate. They come to as a community center, a community resource. They sit outside, and this is a really cool opportunity we have to create a transformative space. You know, I don't want to create, you know, too high of an expectation on this, but this is a cool opportunity that we have to empower the community through this effort that we're doing. I love that we're doing a community engagement process to this, but I just thought that, you know, maybe this could really be an opportunity for us to really embrace diversity and use multi-language. If we're doing anything written, you know, we could even integrate Braille for that, those members of the community who communicate through Braille. And that's just, you know, really focusing on cultural sensitivity. You know, I think it's funny that we just talked about the lived life experience and that strategic plan, which outlines that they don't, the Black lived experience doesn't always feel reflected in our arts and in our spaces. And when I speak to my friends who are Native American, they'll tell me that they don't feel like their culture is being integrated into our spaces either. So I don't mean to set the bar too high, but anything we can do to address those points through this effort. Maria, I guess this comment's for you from Jones Studio. I would really appreciate that. I know the community would, too. And I love the idea of integrating the angles of the sun. And, you know, I've seen things like in Scottsdale, I think by Paulus Larry, where, you know, solstice, a line is shown exactly, you know, in a certain way, right? So integrating cool, things like that could be a really cool empowering way that makes it more engaging for the community and can make it more of an educational thing, too. Those are my comments, and thank you.
Are there any other?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll make sure that staff are always taking notes, and we'll make sure that we take those into consideration with the groups. Thank you.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, Mayor, and I just wanted to thank staff and Heidi for providing that background information how long this project's been in work. Because I did receive- Because I did receive an email concerning the cost on it and the timing of it, the time of COVID. But this is a project that should not be held back. Because, you know, we're in phase two concerning the library. We'll be moving out of that in the future. And there's also local employment involved in this project, you know? So it's just everything sounds right that this project should move forward. So thank you.
Ms. McCarthy.
I just want to second Mr. Schimoni's comments about if we can bring in a reflection of the diverse background of the people that live here and possibly even the diverse geology of our area, but more importantly, the people. I think that would be a really good thing to do. Thank you.
Ms. Hansen.
Mayor, Councilmember Odegaard, and Councilmember McCarthy, thank you. We will definitely take those notes into consideration as well. And one added point, especially since Councilmember Odegaard commented that there was a citizen asking about this. Our libraries see over 680,000 patrons a year, with the main library seeing the majority. And so it is definitely vital for us to get ADA compliant as well as make it a place or create a sense of place. And I believe that with what Jana is proposing and Eliza has introduced, the process is exactly what has been missing for a long time. And I think it will definitely get us to the result that we're all looking for, and we're excited to continue to share this along the way.
We have Ms. Whelan.
Thank you. Fantastic Joan Studio. What design and what creativity. Can you tell me where they hail from?
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. They do hail from the city of Phoenix.
Thank you.
But it was a big consideration that they had done a big, you know, previous project in Flagstaff to the selection panel.
Understood. Thank you.
So Counsel, is there a motion on this item?
This is Charlie, and I still move to approve 8A.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by the Vice Mayor to approve this contract with Joan Studio for $75,000 and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. We're now down to item number 8B. This is consideration approval of an artist's contract for design services for the Downtown Connection Center for a total of $25,000. Staffs recommend actions that we approve this contract and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Again, this is Jana Weldon, your Beautification Arts and Sciences Project Administrator. And so this item concerns the artist's contract for the Downtown Connection Center. Next, please. I will go over a little project background that we are looking for the artist, again, to be part of the design team early on, and that this is a contract for the initial design phase, but there will be more contracts later to implement. And I will go over the past projects of the artists recommended by the selection panel and by B-PAC. Next, please. So out of Mountain Line's strategic plan of 2020, a new Downtown Connection Center was the highest priority capital project. Mountain Line officially made it, operates under an IGA. Next, please. The present site of the Connection Center is the recommended location for the new center. Decision on the location will be finalized in the spring of 2021. Mountain Line presented more fully to you last April. Next, please. As we've previously addressed in the library entry action item, we want the artist to be on the design team early. Though bringing an artist on design team early is somewhat new to Flagstaff, it is very, very common on large transportation projects around the country. Mountain Line's current contractor, AECom, has great experience with this, with working in artists in just this manner. Kate Morley, the Deputy General Manager at Mountain Line, is here and will be available to answer questions at the end of the presentation. The CEO and General Manager, Heather Damelin, is also here and would like to address Counsel at this time. At least she was here.
Sorry, I am here. I'm here.
Okay, great. Wonderful.
Sorry, Mayor, Members of Counsel, Heather Damelin, CEO and General Manager for Mountain Line. I want to begin by thanking you for your support of our Downtown Connection Center and for the invitation that allowed us to speak today. I am joined by Kate Morley, our Deputy General Manager, who is really the lead for our Downtown Connection Center project. We just wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank the Beautification and Public Art Commission for their support and for the funding to help make art possible within our project. We appreciate city staff, specifically Jana Weldon, for really spearheading this effort with the support of Dave McIntyre and Eliza Kritzman and all of Economic Vitality. We also recognize that this effort would not be possible without the city's procurement team, and we are grateful. FTA prohibits the use of grant funds on public art efforts, so without the support, we would not be able to add this important and dynamic aspect to our project. We're really excited to partner with Hadad Druigan to bring beautification to the DCC.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So this contract is only partial to the work that the recommended artist will ultimately do. This contract covers the public input process, preliminary conceptual designs for art elements and beautification projects, design revisions and response from public comment, from planning and zoning, from B-PAC, the creation of budgets for all art and art beautification projects proposed. So it's going to what we consider in the field 60% design. Next, please. Our goal is to, in design integration, is to make, again, art organic to the place. One of the specific tasks for this artist is to make an opportunity for a local emerging public artist or artists. This opportunity could take several forms. It could be a mentoring opportunity, or Hadad Druigan could scope a project and oversee the selected artists, since they're emerging, and all the steps to complete a public art project. But it would be something that would give a local emerging public artist that kind of experience, so that they will be more competitive and applying for more projects in Flagstaff and in Arizona, and maybe even across the United States. Overall, though, our goal is to make the beautification and art fit in with the vision of the DCC as a whole, to be an active, connected, welcoming hub. Next, please. So this contract is for $25,000. That's for that design development up to 60%. We're asking for the artist, though, to design to $470,000 worth of beautification and art projects, including that local artist opportunity. It is a large amount. It is available in subsequent fiscal years. This will take quite a bit of time to get to completion. But we do anticipate, there's not going to be one project for $470,000. There's going to be multiple elements, and this is a very expansive place. It has a lot of square footage. So even if you put something in the, you know, lithomosaic in the ground plane, you know, you have a lot of square footage to cover. So that is why the budget is a little bit, you know, higher than normal. This funding is from the BBB. It is protected by ordinance for beautification projects. And these amounts are in our council-approved five-year plan. And we did receive recessive city budget team approval for this project. Next, please. We had quite an active response to this, to the RSOQ, the Request for Qualifications, with 13 qualified applicants. The procurement team led a diverse selection panel through a formal process. The owner stakeholders had a voice. Southside stakeholders and planners had a voice in choosing the artist as well. Next, please. So the panel and B-PAC recommended a husband-and-wife team, Laura Hadad and Tom Druigan, formerly Hadad Druigan LLC. Next, please. This team has vast experience with placemaking, with art. They have made iconic visual forms that excite conversation. They have created spaces where immersion and movement happen. Next, please. They have been in Flagstaff for a course they taught called Roadside Attraction Design Studio. They did this for the Rhode Island School of Design. Hadad Druigan noted the intersection of the transportation, community, and history that was at the Downtown Connection Center. They do both integrated functional elements, and they also do iconic sculpture. They envision at this onset doing a combination of both, but this early vision will obviously be amplified and modified by what they hear from the community. Next, please. So again, this team has extensive experience, so they have a number of transit stations of different types across the country. Next, please. So Catching the Morning Sun is Cloud, a suspended sculpture at a light rail station. Next, please. Next, please. At this transit stop, they used minute... Oops, I'm sorry. I skipped something. This team is adept at capturing history, as they did here with a portrait of El Paso's first librarian. Next, please. And at this related transit stop, they used miniature cavalry figures to create this butterfly to connect the artwork to a nearby army base. So we can imagine what now invisible history of the South Side this team may make visible in their artwork. Next, please. Because mining local culture and history is integral to this team's work, sometimes they go directly and use historical photographs. Next, please. They've worked in many other types of public spaces other than transit centers, so I'm going to show you a few past projects in other types of public spaces. Next, please. Scottsdale's Rio de Flag, known as the Green Belt, was designed in the '70s and is a series of golf courses and parks. It narrows a wide desert flood plain. This is the narrowing point where the water falls over a barrier to slow it down during flooding. So this project actually had extensive and many restrictions put on it by the Army Corps of Engineers. And this project specifically was to lift Indian Bend Road out of the flood plain. But what was interesting is that the community meetings, what came out of it was that even though, you know, the road was coming out, they wanted something that reflected the drama of flooding. Maybe not people on top of their cars waiting to be rescued by helicopters, but something. And so all the aspects of this project, the walls, the earthberms, the gargoyle sculptures, all mark the rising water in some way. Next, please. So historical flood markers are reflected in the walls and on the bridge. Earthberms float as islands during flooding. And when it rains, the gargoyles, gargoyle. Next. And so this is adjacent to the old McCormick Ranch that had Arabian horses. Hence, the gargoyles ended up being equine in nature. I will pause to say that I managed this project for the city of Scottsdale. Next, please. This is another iconic sculpture by this team. I will also note that Tom Druigan is also a landscape architect and can contribute those skills. Next, please. So Sun Spot is made up of dog tags. This sculpture is at an animal shelter along a walking path by the Platte River in Denver. Next, please. So this team, though, pays very attention to small details. They really like to look at the local visual language. Next, please. And then use it in beautification elements. So you can see here in Toledo, they took that glass cut pattern and put it into the wall. Next, please. And this team is also experienced in those, delving into the community and getting out those specifics and feelings from a community. Next, please. So they use exercises. I actually introduced them to this in Scottsdale, but I have to say, the way I introduced it to them, they've improved upon it to draw out those kind of specifics about how, you know, what they might want to see, how they feel about the place, do these kind of, you know, creative exercises. Next, please. So you can see here, they also, you know, got the community involved in, you know, a very creative way. So this is the, next, please. So this is the project that came out of that particular community up in Calgary. It was, obviously, it had a lot of open space. It's called The Hills Are Alive. And, you know, it has walking paths beside it. But although they can work on these large scale, and I've shown you a few large-scale projects, when large, open spaces allow it. Next, please. They are equally adept at the street level. Here in Baltimore, they have several beautification and art elements in the streetscape and paving, with, you know, the sculpture element kind of woven in. The sculpture is pieces of optical lenses. You follow the view through rain garden features in the pavement. And then you reach the object of the scope, which is at the bottom right. So this piece as a whole has a flow. Next, please. They bring the same movement through space to a community park. It's called Fremont Peak Park. Fremont area in Seattle hosts quite a summer solstice celebration. It's a bit pagan. So elements of the Ariadne myth are in the work. Next, please. So a silver thread, like the one that Ariadne gave to Theseus to defeat the Minotaur in the labyrinth, starts at the spool at the top of this picture and winds through paving elements and the path in the park to connect beautification elements. Next, please. So here's a clear vision of the silver thread. Next, please. And it ends in lines pointing to summer and winter solstice sunsets. And there's something about this that just very much reminded me of the observation point at Lowell overlooking Flagstaff. Next, please. So staff recommends to you that you approve a $25,000 contract for Hadad Druigan LLC. Though this contract is under $50,000, the subsequent contracts will be for larger amounts, up to $470,000, depending on what designs come out. It is one procurement process to secure the services of the artist's team, and that's why we're here before you. Of course, the designs that come out of this initial contract will receive public comment, will undergo various city reviews, including B-PAC and council, before proceeding on to further contracts. So this is our recommended action. And again, I welcome your questions and comments.
Counsel. If there are no comments, is there Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jana, for the presentation. That's very exciting. So, you know, Councilwoman Whelan got me thinking with her last comment, and just in regards to trying to best support local art and whatnot. Is, I'm guessing this LLC is not based here in Flagstaff, correct? Is, I'm guessing this LLC is not based here in Flagstaff, correct?
That is correct. They are based in Seattle.
Okay. And I know this is just the initial first step is this, with, you know, bigger plans ahead. Are there any local agencies that do this type of work?
So one of the reasons, Vice Mayor Shumani, thank you for the question, because we do want to make local artists much more competitive in this kind of design team process. And that's one of the reasons that we included this local emerging artist public, you know, element. Because, you know, that Fremont Park, that was one of their earliest projects. And from that one project, which is a rather simple project, they grew, you know, their public art practice. And it takes, you know, it's a competitive process. Our procurement process is, you know, it's blind, people, you know, you don't know where people are from, so you have to get that experience. So we really do want to start providing a lot of, you know, Flagstaff artists this kind of, you know, public arts are a very unique beast. And it takes a lot of different kinds of skills rather than just art skills. And so we hope to give a local artist or artists experience in this space that they can go then, you know, compete more of, you know, both here and maybe down in the valley and in Tucson, and then maybe they can expand to other states like this artist's team did when they were first emerging.
Okay, thank you for that, Jenna. And so my only comments for, you know, I'm happy to see us move forward with this, you know, is with this LLC, you know, I think that the culture and the community that I'm hoping we, you know, empower and engage and reflect through these efforts, they don't always turn out to just a public, you know, pop-up tent at the farmer's market, for example, right? You know, it might take some more work on their part to reach some of these more diverse cultural groups I'm hoping we better reflect. So, you know, agencies like NACA, I mean, I can start listing a whole name of agencies, but I'm not going to do that. I'm happy to talk to you and them offline if that's helpful. But, you know, I just think that a sense of, like, I know with Native culture especially, there's really a sense of purpose and intention that goes into the setup of a space from the angles and the way it's designed. And the more we can do of those types of things, the better, in my opinion. But, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Shumani. I would definitely welcome your input. And we are strategizing, you know, obviously, some of the kind of immersive things that we, you know, did pre-COVID, we have a challenge in adopting them. But this project is actually going to go so long that I think that all those kind of more immersive interactions between the artist and the community of different levels can occur with this project. It's not on a fast timeline. Rio de Flag actually has to be completed on that section before, you know, any kind of construction can take place.
Absolutely. And then just in closing, Jenna, you know, now that we have an Indigenous Commission established, you know, it might be, you know, a great way to kind of vet some of these ideas through and see what kind of input they might have to share. And obviously, we also have a diversity commission as well. Add more work to your plate, but just some ideas.
No, thank you, Vice Mayor Shumani. I do want to let you know that our Indigenous Coordinator, Rose, has sat on one of our panels. So did Dr. Ricardo Guthrie. He also sat on one of our panels. We are doing some outreach right from the beginning in the selecting of the artists.
Excellent. Thank you.
So with that, is there a motion?
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy.
This is Charlie, and I provide the second.
Okay. So I move to pass item eight B, as in Baker.
And Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah.
Okay. There's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy with a second by Mr. Odegaard to approve the artist's contract for design services for the Downtown Connection Center with Hadad Drogen LLC for $25,000, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number eight C. This is a consideration and approval. This is the Red Gap Ranch grazing lease with Bar T Bar Ranch. Staff's recommended action is that we approve this grazing lease with Bar T Bar Ranch and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Mayor, members of council, this is Mark Richardson, Water Services Operations Manager. I'm here with Patrick Brown to answer any questions that you may have relative to the Red Gap Ranch grazing lease.
So, um... Counsel? I'd like to make a motion, if I may. I'd like to make a motion that I would move that we reject all bids to allow the city to explore other alternatives, options, or potential programs to include the solicitation and possible, a potential lease agreement for Red Gap Ranch.
I second that, Mayor.
There's been a motion made by myself and a second by Ms. Whelan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number eight D. This is a consideration approval of a preliminary plat, P-L-T-L-C-P-C Land Investors LLC request of a preliminary plat approval for the estates at Pine Canyon Bluff. This is located at 2080 East Delray Drive, a single-family home subdivision on 17.5 acres in the R1 single-family residential zone. Staff's recommend action, staff recommends the city council in accordance to the findings presented in this report and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of approval, six one in favor, to approve this preliminary plat. Staff?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Genevieve Pear Three, Planning Development Manager with the current Planning Section of the City of Flagstaff. I'm here to present this preliminary plat approval request for the estates at Pine Canyon, Pine Bluff. So in summary, it's a request from TLC-PC Land Investors LLC for preliminary plat approval for the estates at Pine Canyon, Pine Bluff. It's located at 2080 East Delray Drive. It is a single-family subdivision with 26 lots located on 17.5 acres. The zoning is R1 or single-family residential. Staff administratively approved the preliminary plat on October 8th, 2020. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted six one in favor of forwarding it to city council with a recommendation of approval, and that took place on November 12th, 2020. So it's located in Pine Canyon, and it is in the southwestern corner of Pine Canyon, again, at 2080 East Delray Drive. Yeah, on a 17.5 acre tract in the larger 660 acre Pine Canyon development. It's a vacant site. It's actually one of the last undeveloped tracts in Pine Canyon. Again, a single-family residential zone and 26 single-family lots. It also has a resource protection overlay. It does have significant steep slopes and trees, which require larger lots and unique building envelopes and lot shapes to meet resource protection standards, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Now, here's an overview of the plat. We can see the 26 slots as well as a new cul-de-sac in the middle that will be called Pine Meadow Drive. So the findings for approval, the first one is that it meets the zoning code, which is Title X of City Code. So this focus of that, here is the single-family residential zone standard. So it is slightly below the density allowed for single-family residential, but the development agreement for this site requires 26 lots, so that is what is proposed. The lots are also designed to meet resource protection requirements, so to protect steep slopes and trees. So all lots meet the minimum size of 6,000 square feet. All but four lots meet the requirements for the minimum width and depth at the front setback line. So that's 15 feet back. However, council can, or zoning code does allow council to approve alternate lot sizes and setbacks on a final plat. And so, and those were designed with the resource protection requirements in mind. All the lots as well also have unique building envelopes that meet or exceed the minimum setbacks for the R1 zone. So we can see here, this shows the lots as well as the unique building envelopes that were designed basically around trees and to be out of steep slopes. And so that's where the lot design and building envelope design came from. Now, we can see this is the resource protection plan, so quite a bit of trees. The yellow and pink are all the steep slope areas. So again, these were designed as much as possible to avoid disturbing steep slopes and removing trees, and this does meet all relevant resource protection requirements. So the second finding for approval is that it meets the engineering standards, which is Title 13 of City Code. So the traffic impact analysis, water and sewer, and wastewater impact analysis, and stormwater impact analyses, those were all completed when Pine Canyon was originally developed, starting in, the rezoning was approved in 2000. So most of the infrastructure that's needed to support this subdivision is already in place. However, there are a few things that will be developed as part of this subdivision. So there's that new street in the middle, and it does meet the rural, local street section standards. And it's a private drive. All interior streets are private and maintained by Pine Canyon. There also will be new eight-inch water and sewer lines for the subdivision as well as new low-impact development basins proposed just outside of the subdivision on the golf course around it. And again, all the other required improvements were already complete and took place as part of the larger Pine Canyon development. So you can just see on this image shows the location of the utilities in relation to the lots as well as those low-impact development basins up here outside of the subdivision. The last finding for approval is that the subdivision plat meets Title 11, the subdivision standards, specifically the subdivision and land split regulations, which is Chapter 11-20. So this preliminary plat met all procedures and application requirements. It also meets the minimum required subdivision improvements. Those were identified in those public systems analyses, which I previously discussed on the last two slides. So it's meeting all requirements in terms of providing infrastructure needed to support the development. And then the last part is that it meets the subdivision standards and regulations. So for lot, street easement, and block design, basically, those are focused on working with the existing terrain and kind of building what makes sense. And this does that, as I showed previously, there are significant slopes and trees. So this, the way that this is designed is to really work with that existing topography. So in summary, city council shall find that the preliminary plat meets the requirements of City Code, which includes Title X, the Flagstaff zoning code, Title 11, which is general plans and subdivisions, and Title 13, which is the engineering design standards and specifications. So staff recommends, based on the required findings as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval, that city council approve the preliminary plat. That's all I have for my presentation, but the applicant is here as well, and either one of us can answer questions. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions of staff or the applicant at this time? Counsel, if there's no questions or comments, is there a motion?
This is Charlie Mayer, and I move to approve eight D.
Is there a second?
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard with a second by Ms. McCarthy to approve this preliminary plat for LTC-PC Land Investors LLC for the estates at Pine Canyon, Pine Bluff, located at 2080 East Delray Drive. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're down to...
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome. We're now down to eight E. This is consideration adoption of ordinance number 2020-31 in ordinance amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-18, administrative departments to establish the Engineering and Capital Improvement Division in City Code. Staff's recommended action is that we read ordinance number 2020-31 by title only for the final time, and then that we adopt ordinance number 2020-31. Counsel, we've already had a first read on this. Is there any other of the conversation, or do we have a motion?
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I move to approve item eight E.
Is there a second? Was that the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. There's been a motion to read by Mr. McCarthy, excuse me, a move to read by Mr. McCarthy, and a second by the Vice Mayor to read ordinance number 2020-31 by title only for the final time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-18, administrative departments to establish the Engineering and Capital Improvements Division, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-31?
This is Charlie, and I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
McCarthy, second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. McCarthy to adopt ordinance number 2020-31. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to eight F. This is a consideration adoption of ordinance number 2020-32. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, changing the name of Agassi Street to W.C. Riles, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Staff's recommend actions that we read ordinance number 2020-32 by title only for the final time, and then that we adopt ordinance number 2020-32. I know that Mr. McCarthy has indicated that he would like to make the motion on this item. I would like to go first to public comments, and then I will come back to Mr. McCarthy. Public comment, please?
Just a moment, Mayor.
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. Good evening again, or afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm here to support the renaming of Agassi to Wilson Riles Street or Drive. People have asked who was Wilson Riles? And Wilson Riles was the principal of the Dunbar School, and the Murdoch Center sits on that site, and Agassi Street runs right alongside the Murdoch Center. So we felt it was, it was appropriate to name, to rename the street Wilson C. Riles. Also, just so that you know, a lot of people don't know who Wilson Riles is, so we have decided to do a virtual conversation with his three children, and that will be on December 9th at 5:30. And so that's to educate our community about this man and his national legacy. And so I would encourage you to adopt the name of the street to Wilson Riles and change it from Agassi. If you are familiar with Agassi, he spoke specifically about black people being at the bottom of the evolution chain or the human chain. And so we really feel that it's appropriate that we take that back and rename the street after someone who has done much good for all of our community. So thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Harris? Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Ms. House, please give your comments to council now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council for the opportunity to speak with you again, this time in support of changing the name of Agassi Street to W.C. Riles Drive or Street. Wilson Riles distinguished history in Flagstaff as an A U graduate, a school administrator, and the leader in the desegregation of Flagstaff schools, marks important Flagstaff history and acknowledgement of the path forward. marks important Flagstaff history and acknowledgement of the path forward toward recognition of Flagstaff's past, celebration of Flagstaff's community, and hope for Flagstaff's future. I am thankful to the city for engaging in this community process, recognizing Mr. Riles' contributions to Flagstaff, and acknowledging the need to allow the places and spaces of Flagstaff's community to reflect the people who shaped it. Thank you so much again for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. House. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. House? Thank you, Ms. House.
Ms. Finger, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Vicky Finger, and my husband Steve and I would like to strongly support the change of name from Agassi to WC Riles. This is a chance to make visible what we have just decided was important to bring, to make visible the invisible community. And it will recognize the historical presence and the contributions of the black community, which is so important at this point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Fingers. Counsel, are there any questions? Comments? Thank you. We do have a comment. Vice Mayor.
I apologize. It wasn't in response to the public comments. I'll save my comment for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Guthrie, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Evans and City Council for listening again to us today. I just want to commend you for taking this momentous step. And I also support the renaming of Agassi Street after Wilson Riles. I support the change because there's currently no street or public space named after a black person of such stature to the entire city. And as for the number of votes received, it's perhaps unintentional that it was lower than expected because the full name was not put on the ballot for consideration. Most people know who Wilson Riles is, but nobody knows who's WC Riles is. That's definitely not who he was named for. So I don't give as much weight to the tallying up of the final vote counts. Otherwise, we'd be on Pluto, and that's probably not where we want to go with this name. So I just want to affirm it's not a popularity contest. It's about righting an historical wrong. Agathys was put on that street for all the wrong reasons, and Wilson Riles or WC Riles or some variation of that is moving forward at a very momentous time. It's a way to historically confirm that black people helped shape Flagstaff and our region for the better, and I commend you for this momentous step forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Guthrie? Thank you, Dr. Guthrie. Was that our last public comment, Karen?
Mayor, it was.
Thank you, City Clerk. We're going to go back to Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion, and then I'm going to give some explanation of why I'm making it the way I'm making it. I move that we read Ordinance 2020-32 by title only for the first time, with the clarification that the name of the street will be WC Riles Street and not the WC Riles Drive. And now, explanation. I, I had occasion to talk to some of the people at the post office when I was down there doing other business, and their comment was, why would you name it Drive when every street in the downtown is called Street? It's not called Drive or Boulevard or whatever. So I talked to Sarah Langley, who was kind of the lead on this item. And if she's listening, thank you for your help. She put me in charge with Kelsey Hundt Tolfd. I'm sure I'm destroying that name, but anyway. She was very helpful, and she said, yes, indeed, we can call it Street. There's some rules about naming new streets, Street or Boulevard or whatever. But in this case, the GIS group, which she is a member of, agrees that we can call it WC Riles Street. So that's my motion, and thank you to staff for helping out on this little nitpicky detail.
I'm going to ask you to clarify your motion, Mr. McCarthy, because we were actually going to do this read. We're going to read this ordinance for the final time and not the first time.
You know, that, that was a mistake on my part. I want to read this ordinance for the final time, but still clarifying WC Riles Street.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I apologize.
Vice Mayor, would you like to provide the second and then make your comment?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I, I second Counselor McCarthy's motion. And I just wanted to, you know, just seeing the, the graphic up on the screen, it just gives me goosebumps, you know, and it, and it makes me feel somewhat emotional. You know, this is powerful stuff, and I know this is just a street name at the end of it, but this is important, and these small steps are, are important. And so I just want to express gratitude to City Staff, the community, the council for getting us to this point and, and making this happen. And I hope to see a lot more victories in steps like this in the years to come. But let's celebrate this one for sure. Thank you.
There's been a motion by Mr. McCarthy and a second by the Vice Mayor to read Ordinance Number 2020-32 by title only for the final time, making sure that we have the clerical correction, that this would be for WC Riles Street. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, changing the name of Agassi Street to WC Riles Street, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Counsel, is there a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-32?
So moved. Jim McCarthy.
Is there a second?
I'm happy to second that unless Councilmember Whelan wants to.
Ms. Whelan?
No, thank you, Councilmember Aslan. It takes the team to do these things, so I appreciate all of you. Please go ahead.
There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Aslan to adopt Ordinance Number 2020-32. Are there any further comments? I just want to remind Counsel and everybody who's listening that for those of you who do not know the legacy of the story behind Mr. Wilson Riles, there will be a special Black Lives Experience on the 9th, Wednesday, the 9th of December. It'll be streamed live from Facebook on the Murdoch Community Centers page. You will have his grandchildren and other people who knew him well, who will discuss his legacy, not only here in Flagstaff, but the part that he played in education nationally. And it's at 6:00 PM, again, next Wednesday, the 9th, on the Murdoch Community Centers Facebook page. There's been a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to Item Number 9B. This is a consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2020-65, a resolution authorizing the execution of a Development Agreement Amendment between Meramonte Presidio LLC and the City of Flagstaff. This is related to the development of approximately 2.77 acres of real property. Oh, wait, I did skip something. Let me stop and go back. We are actually on Item Number 9, and we're on Item Number 9A. I apologize for that. This is our regular agenda. Item Number 9A, this is a consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2020-64, a resolution adopting the Water Conservation Strategic Plan. Staff's recommended action is that we read Resolution Number 2020-64 by title only and then adopt. Ms. Lawless?
Yes, thank you. Let me pull up my slide. Can you see those?
We can see that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Tammy Lawless, Water Conservation Manager, giving you a brief overview of the final draft of our Water Conservation Strategic Plan. Just some really brief plan background. The impetus for the plan, you may recall that in 2016, there was a discussion about reframing the Water Conservation Program with the Water Resources Section and State Sustainability with goals to transform Flagstaff into a water-wise leader and to develop an innovative plan. In 2017, Council set a goal to be a national leader in water conservation across all sectors, which was held until 2019. And there are also goals to quantify water conservation as a supply. In 2017, there was also a budgetary increase, which provided funding for additional staff and also the funds for this plan, which has been an ongoing process since fiscal year 18. Some of the outcomes of the planning process, which is now concluded, was goal-setting for the plan. We assessed conservation actions for water savings and costs. We created a revised conservation work plan to maximize economic benefit and also community benefits. We provided context for a future rate study. And when we provided the initial draft of this plan, we said that we were planning to apply for Flagstaff to be on the Alliance for Water Efficiency's leaderboard. And as of September, we have been added to the leaderboard at gold status. There are three levels, bronze, gold, and platinum, and Flagstaff achieved at gold, which we're very proud of. We're the first Arizona utility to be recognized on the leaderboard. Some of the things that we will do by adopting an optimized conservation program will be to save an additional 690 acre feet over the 20 years of the planning period. And that's through an estimated decrease of approximately 20 gallons per person per day. Most of that occurs outdoors, which is an important note because you may have heard that we have some slow flows in areas of our sewer system. And so during the process, we worked with the community to find ways to conserve in, in ways that didn't have as high of an impact on those slow flows and sewers. And so by focusing on outdoor water conservation initiatives, we were able to mitigate some of those impacts to our sewer system while we do some long-term planning for that issue. By investing in this optimized program, we also delay the need for a new water supply. So just by having plumbing, plumbing code adjustments, we can delay to 2037. Our current program delays to 2042 approximately, and then this optimized program that is in the plan will theoretically bump the need for an additional supply to 2048. And I have some additional graphics for that on my following slides. It's also a significant deferred financial investment for the City of Flagstaff and for Water Services over the next 30 years. The model approximates that we'll save $160 million in deferred costs, which is $448 in savings of, per acre foot of avoided costs. So this graph here shows, without conservation, we would need to invest in an expensive new water supply by 2034, when the Flagstaff population is only 106,000 people. By investing in this revitalized plan, we can bump that need to 2047 or 2048, when the Flagstaff population is more closer to 140,000. And the total projected capacity of Flagstaff is 150,000, according to the regional plan. So that gives us a very optimistic future for that ability to meet the needs of the town at capacity when we get there. So our recommendation is that you formally adopt our strategic plan tonight. We did get a recommendation to adopt from our Water Commission on November 19th. After this, we are going to finalize our implementation plan, which will be more of a fluid living document of how we're implementing it year to year. That will include some policy or code updates in the future. There are two of those that are recommended in the plan. And we will be making some small adjustments to the plan and to the model for COVID-19 and our recession plan, as we've had to, you know, delay a few new projects and some of our additional staffing as we work through those constraints. So with that, we just want to express our sincere thanks for Counsel's support over the past several years as we have been improving our program and finishing this plan and really trying to show that Flagstaff is a player on the national scale in water conservation. On the screen, you'll see some images of our staff and of Water Ranas Month, and also of the award that we received this year from the EPA Water Sense Program, which was a really wonderful national accolade for our team. So with that, those are my slides, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lawless? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a minute to express my gratitude that I've been able to be kind of backstage and watching the ideas and the, all the work that staff has put into this and our Water Commission. And I'm so appreciative to moving forward on that. You know, we're talking about major water saving. So thank you all for moving this forward, we hope, and all the work that you've put into it. Excellent, excellent work. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, Counsel? I just want to say thank you to Ms. Lawless and all of the other individuals that work on our water conservation, sustainability, and water team. I know that when I first brought the project of the water, the Mayor's Water Challenge from the Wildland Foundation to you all, you took that idea above and beyond anything that I could have thought of, and I just truly appreciate your passion in this area, and I'm very grateful that you are on Team Flagstaff. Mr. Shimonie, Vice Mayor?
I was just going to also echo the same comments of gratitude to staff and to the community participation and stakeholders groups. I, I just, I'm glad to see Flagstaff leading the way with these types of efforts and looking forward to the work ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Whelan?
Mayor, I'd like to move that the adoption of Resolution Number 2020-64 be approved or and read by title only.
Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan with a second by Mr. McCarthy to read Resolution Number 2020-64 by title only. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the Water Conservation Strategic Plan.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-64?
So moved.
Is there a second?
This is second, Charlie.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan and a second by Mr. Odegaard to adopt Resolution 2020-64. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to Item Number 9B. Item Number 9B is consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2020-65. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of a Development Agreement Amendment between Meramonte and the City of Flagstaff, related to the development of approximately 2.77 acres of real property located at 2940 South Woody Mountain Road, Presidio in the Pines Development Agreement Amendment. Staff's recommended action is that we read Resolution Number 2020-65 by title only and then adopt.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is Genevieve Pear Three again, Planning Development Manager with the current planning section in the City of Flagstaff. I'm here to present this resolution for a Development Agreement Amendment for the Presidio in the Pines Development Agreement. So a little bit of background on the site before I go into the details of the Development Agreement Amendment. So Presidio in the Pines came about because of a successful rezoning, which was approved by City Council in 2004. It proposed to create a 9- It proposed to create a 91-acre master planned community that would have a mix of uses such as single-family and multifamily residential, commercial, open space, and a church site. The Development Agreement was also approved in 2004 by City Council to, as a way to make that development happen. The focus of this Development Agreement Amendment, it's for tract M of the Presidio in the Pines subdivision, or it's also covered in Section 6.6 of the current Development Agreement. So this tract M, it has Highway Commercial zoning or HC. It's on 2.77 acres. Multifamily development is permitted in the HC zone with a conditional use permit. As such, staff did administratively approve a site plan for 39 units on that site, and that was approved in September 2020. However, the development for Presidio in the Pines currently requires a church site or other neighborhood, indoor neighborhood use on tract M. So in order to allow multiple family development to happen on the tract M, the Development Agreement has to be amended. So that's the focus of the request today. So here is tract M. We can see it's in the very southwest corner of Presidio in the Pines, which is at the corner of Woody Mountain Road and I-40. It's a little bit more detail where you can see it's right at that very southwest corner of Presidio in the Pines. So the Development Agreement, again, it was approved and recorded in 2004 to facilitate development of Presidio in the Pines. It has been amended three times. So the first time was in 2007. It outlined the process to annex and coordinate infrastructure with an adjacent site to Presidio in the Pines with the purpose of ultimately bringing that site into the Presidio in the Pines development. The Second Amendment was in 2008. It allowed that adjacent site to continue to develop because the developers that were party to the original DA had fired, Development Agreements, excuse me, had filed for bankruptcy. The Third Amendment was in 2012, and that allowed Meramonte, Arizona LLC to take over the Presidio in the Pines development, which they have done, and they are the applicant for this fourth proposed amendment. So the purpose of this amendment is to update the Development Agreement to allow multiple family development on tract M of the Presidio in the Pines subdivision. So the focus again is on Section 6.6 of the Development Agreement, which is the church site development is what it's titled. And that section was not previously amended in any of the three amendments that happened before. So this, the Development Agreement currently says that a church site is allowed, and if that's not built, then another neighborhood or indoor neighborhood use would be permitted. So in the Land Development Code, that was defined as a neighborhood, a community, a recreation center, a daycare center, a gymnasium, a library, other types of indoor recreation centers, a public or private school, an indoor swimming pool, or tennis, racquetball courts, et cetera. But it did not allow, or the current Development Agreement does not allow multiple family development again. So that's why the focus of this amendment is on that Section 6.6 of the Development Agreement. So the proposed updates within that section of the Development Agreement, there's three. I'll go through each one of them. So the first one is to permit multiple family development on tract M. So this, the proposed update states that the site shall be developed according to the Presidio in the Pines tract M site plan. That's the one that staff administratively approved in September 2020. And that site plan does propose multiple family development, three units total across three buildings, 13 units per building. And again, multiple family development is a permitted use in the HC zone with a conditional use permit. So here's a little bit of information about these site plans. We can see those three buildings. They're three stories each. Again, they have 13 units total. So the total number of units are three studios, 12 one-bedroom units, 18 two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units, and those are divided evenly across those three buildings. You can also see there's a significant amount of open space set aside. This is in a resource protection zone, so it's setting aside land to meet those resource protection standards. There's also quite a large area on the southwestern corner of the site that's set aside for potential future ADOT right-of-way. This is because the regional plan shows a traffic interchange at Woody Mountain Road and I-40. And so this was set aside for potential future ADOT right-of-way, so no parking lot or buildings or anything are located in that area. These are the building elevations that were approved at site plans. This is for reference only, but that's what the Development Agreement update is tied to this approved site plan. So that was included in that site plan. These look familiar. That's because they're the same buildings that were approved for the Meramonte at Ponderosa Parkway project as well. And then there's a few steps buildings. So this is the other building type that will be there. So these are for reference only, but these were what were approved at site plan. So the second update is the creation of a homeowners association because these are intended to be condos. So the HOA will manage and maintain the common elements in the site, which includes common elements in the buildings as well as on the grounds. And the condo declarations will require a minimum 30-day lease. So that's the second component of the proposed amendment. And the third component is attainable housing. So the developer agrees to provide 10% minimum of the units to be sold at or below 100% of the area median income affordability level. So this unit next will be dictated by buyer's preferences and the construction timing. The initial sales price will be at least 25% lower than the market rate units. However, the deed restriction may terminate if these are on the market long enough and can't be sold. This is the same language that was in the Ponderosa Parkway Development Agreement. And applicant is here to answer any questions about that, if you would like to know more about that. So the council options are to approve the Presidio in the Pines Development Agreement as presented. That was the staff recommendation. The second is to approve Presidio in the Pines Development Agreement with additional modified or deleted terms. The third option is to remand the Development Agreement Amendment back to staff for additional negotiations with Meramonte Presidio LLC. And the fourth option is to deny the Development Agreement Amendment. So that's all I have. Thank you, and I can answer any questions, as can the applicant.
Council, are there any questions? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you for that presentation. I guess the third time's the charm. So I'm wondering, in my mind, getting rid of either the recreational facilities or the spiritual facilities, if the developer would do better with the affordable housing?
I'll go ahead and let the developer answer that question.
Thank you.
Frankly, I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
Chris, what I'm asking you is, you said 10%, 100% AMI. I'm wondering if you would lower that AMI and go for maybe 20% or 30%?
Well, I think there's a couple issues here. And the first issue is because of that ADOT right-of-way, we've lost about 25% of the site, you know, between the setbacks and that ADOT right-of-way. The other issue is, you know, Meramonte, our goal really is to provide affordable housing. And I need to be careful about my terminology. I'm going to use the word workforce housing because anymore I'm not sure what affordable housing means, but I do know what workforce housing means. And the issue is when we do the affordable housing, like we did at Ponderosa and like we're doing at Presidio, you know, this 10% here, we actually lose money, much like we do at Ponderosa. We lose money on those affordable units, which jacks up the price of the market rate. And the market rate, you know, I'm trying to bring market rate workforce housing to the market. In this case, below all the pricing that we've sold units for and our competitors have sold units for at Presidio. And, you know, again, it just, financially, if we keep adding affordable housing units, we lose money on those. Then we have to jack up the market rate housing, and it really doesn't make any sense anymore.
Well, I think sometimes that happens, jacking up the market rate without these considerations, don't you think?
Well, again, my goal, there is a really, forget about, there is a definite need and a definite market for workforce housing in Flagstaff.
So, Chris, was this property part of the bankruptcy that you bought most of Presidio?
Well, yes, all of the property of Presidio. We bought the original developer's interest that was left.
Right, and it's my understanding that the actual price of the property was very reasonable.
Well, it depends how you look at that. If you, there's not many people around anymore at the city, but we worked with the city on that project. Before we closed on the land, we had to settle, the HOA was suing the city, the city was suing the bond company, and we had, we worked with the city staff. And again, I think Rick Barrett's the only guy left anymore that was there then. But we worked with staff, and we had to supplement to the tune of a couple million bucks money to get the infrastructure complete. Because one of the issues was with this project that approximately 80 homeowners had bought lots, and the infrastructure was not complete. The streets weren't in. So it was a horrendous mess, and we worked with staff and got it cleaned up. But, you know, you say the price was cheap, not when we had to supply millions of dollars of our cash to get the infrastructure completed, which it wasn't. You know, we had to redig up sewers that were done. I mean, it was, in all my years of being in this business, this was the biggest mess I've ever dealt with. And frankly, I'm pretty proud that we got it done. And other than this site, everything's sold out. We're sold out there. Capstone's sold out there. There's no other lots left.
Well, I'd hope you'd reconsider that. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm very pleased that we have a provision where the HOA will disallow short-term rentals. I think that will ensure that these homes are used by people that live in Flagstaff instead of people that live out of town and come up here and use our homes as weekenders, so to speak. So I'm very pleased about that. I do believe that this change will provide some housing, workhouse, some workforce housing and some affordable housing, a little of each. And so I'm very supportive of this change, and I compliment the developer for providing more housing.
Are there any other comments or is there a motion?
Mayor, this is Charlie, and I move to read Resolution Number 2020-65 by title only with the DA amendment as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. McCarthy to read Resolution Number 2020-65 by title only. If there's no further discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, authorizing the execution of the Fourth Amendment to the Presidio in the Pines Development Agreement between Meramonte Presidio LLC and the City of Flagstaff related to the development of approximately 2.77 acres of real property located at 2940 South Woody Mountain Road, Flagstaff, Arizona, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-65?
This is Charlie, move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. McCarthy to adopt Resolution Number 2020-65. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're going to stop and take a break. It's approximately five minutes after five. We'll be back at 5:15, and we will pick up with item number 9C. Thank you. Thank you. We are now down to item number 9C. Item number 9C is consideration and approval of a contract. This is change order number 14 with Shepherd Wesnitzer, Inc. in the amount of $374,135 and to add 180 calendar days for the Rio de Flag Flood Control Utility Relocation Design Services Contract. Staff's recommended actions that we approve this change order number 14, that we add 180 calendar days to the design services contract, and that we authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Staff?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. This is Trevor Henry with the Capital Improvements Program. Are you able to see the first slide of the presentation?
I can see that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the Rio de Flag project team is pleased to provide for your consideration change order number 14 to the design service contract for Shepherd Wesnitzer. Shepherd Wesnitzer is the project design consultant for the city, for the Rio de Flag. So before going into details of change order number 14, I would like to provide a little history on the project and design. The following is the overall project map. We have the Lower Reach on the left side of the screen. We have the Clay Avenue Reach on the, excuse me. The Lower Reach is on the right side. The Clay Avenue is on the left side. And the Upper Reach goes towards the upper part of the screen. So the Army Corps had the section, the project into two phases. So Phase One includes the Lower and the Clay Avenue Reach, which is shown and represented in a red outline. Phase Two is the Upper Reach, which includes the Composite Channel and the Floodwall Section, and that's represented with a orange outline. There are other components of the project that have been completed to date. The Clay Avenue Detention Basin is on the far west, and that was done in 2009. The Butler Tunnel is on the far east, which was completed in 2010. The last remaining item that was completed was the Thorpe Road Bridge, which is in the north section, and that was done in 2012. In 2005, the city entered into a contract with Shepherd Wesnitzer for design services. The original contract was approved by council. The original contract amount was for $1.58 million with a duration of 275 days. Included in that contract was contract allowance and change order authority. The original contract was based on two parts. The first part was based on the Army Corps' 30% plans for utilities, right-of-way, plans, and specifications. The second part would include added work or added tasks that came from the first part of the contract. In 2005 to 2009, the contract with Shepherd Wesnitzer executed modifications that were administered through the city manager's change order authority and staff's contract allowance authority. These modifications included three change orders for additional utility work, right-of-way, and title reports. It included seven field orders for project exhibits. In 2009, staff presented change order number four to council, and it was approved. Change order number four was a result of a value engineering workshop that the Army Corps conducted. Therefore, the project scope was revised, and the city needed to work on that and provide our portion per the project cooperation agreement. So the amount of change order number four was just over $1 million with 270 calendar days. So some of the work that was included in change order four was the open channel versus the closed channel. There was additional revised scope of work for the Lower and Upper Reaches. There was extensive property acquisition details. There was extensive property acquisition details and reports that were needed. So that was Change Order Number Four that occurred in two thousand and nine. From two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty, again, that contract with Shepherd Wesnitzer executed modifications that were administered through the city manager's change order authority and staff's contract allowance authority. These modifications included eight change orders for utility designs and calendar days. Also, there were seven field orders for utility coordination and subconsultant added work. In March of this year, staff presented Change Order Number Thirteen and council approved. Change Order Number Thirteen was a result of the Army Corps receiving fifty-two million dollars in federal funds to complete the project. Staff met with Shepherd Wesnitzer and came up with a task that represented the work needed at that time to complete the project. And again, Change Order Number Thirteen was based on coordination and discussions with the Army Corps. The amount of Change Order Number Thirteen was for four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars with three hundred and sixty-five calendar days. So some of the work in Change Order Number Thirteen was added field surveys, a sewer design near the Five Points intersection. There was a bridge design that would be set at Beale Street in the upper reach, and traffic signal modifications that we would have to work with ADOT at Five Points Intersection. So just to remind the council, prior to Change Order Number Thirteen, as we talked about in the history, the project design sat idle for almost nine years, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty. So now let's talk about Change Order Fourteen. Change Order Number Fourteen is before you tonight for your consideration. Change Order Number Fourteen is a result of further discussions with the Army Corps regarding the project schedule and task of work that remain to get the project to the final stage. Change Order Number Fourteen is also a result of both the Army Corps and the city diving into the design, performing the survey field work, and meeting with our stakeholders, such as ADOT and BNSF. Change Order Number Fourteen will also produce one hundred percent construction plans that the Army Corps can solicit bids for a construction contract. The amount of Change Order Number Fourteen is three hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars with one hundred and eighty days added. So, so speaking a little bit about Change Order Number Fourteen, it has supplemental tasks for the design as outlined and requested by the Army Corps. So some of these tasks are the BNSF utility relocations, there's permitting that we have to go through. We have fiber optic plans that we need to account for. There was project exhibits that we had provided to give the before and after of what the project was going to look like. We had project plan updates and phasing of the project. Also, Change Order Fourteen had supplemental survey tasks to support the real estate certification. And those items were Schedule B reviews, there was legal descriptions with area photos added. We had segment maps, we have revised legal descriptions, and we also have additional field survey within Phase Two to help with the real estate. Change Order Number Fourteen had additional side drain analysis for areas that have been modified by the Army Corps in the Clay Avenue Reach, such as McCracken Place and Blackbird Roost. So what the Army Corps did is they adjusted the box structure, so we had to make sure that drainage and how the roadway geometry and prism matched up. Change Order Number Fourteen also had final design and coordination to provide one hundred percent plans, which included the phasing of all the documents. Some of those documents include the engineer's opinion of probable cost, special provisions, utility relocation plans, surface reconstruction plans. So there's that coordination of the phasing. Included with Change Order Number Fourteen is a one hundred and eighty-day time extension or added days. The time extension will keep the contract with Shepherd Wesnitzer current and will support the Army Corps' intentions for construction in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. The scope of Change Order Number Fourteen has been reviewed by city staff. Change Order Number Fourteen will meet the responsibility for the city as outlined in the project cooperation agreement. Change Order Number Fourteen will meet the schedule as conveyed by the Army Corps. Funding for the Change Order Number Fourteen will come from the city's Stormwater Fund. And on November fifth of last month, the Change Order Committee reviewed and recommend, recommended that this Change Order Fourteen be forwarded to council for approval. And just to conclude our presentation, staff is available for questions, and also Guillermo Portenes from Shepherd Wesnitzer is joining us virtually, and he may be able to answer any questions directed towards him. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions for staff or our consultant at this time?
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Trevor. Thank you for that really clear presentation. Can you tell me, um, after fourteen change orders, what's the total cost of those change orders?
So the original, or Councilmember Whelan, so the original contract was for one point five eight million dollars, and all the prior changes, prior to Change Order Fourteen, added up to one point five eight million. So currently, before Change Order Number Fourteen, we are at three point two million, three point one million as the current contract. And if Change Order Fourteen is approved, we will be at three point five four million dollars.
So, just a point of clarification. We, the change orders were to be, one point, we had anticipated that change orders would be one point five eight million. And up until this change order, all change orders have tallied to three point two million. Is that correct? So we're doubled.
Essentially, Councilmember Whelan, essentially, with the prior change orders, we have doubled the original contract amount.
For change orders only, correct?
For change orders only, that is correct.
Okay, so, and I remember, I think several years ago, uh, when uh, city manager Goodrich was here, we spoke about a timeline. So could you tell me how far in arrears are we, um, in our timeline? Do you have an idea about that?
So Councilmember Whelan, I'm, I'm not following the question, a timeline with regards to the project or a timeline?
The project.
With where we get to, to construction plans or to where we start a project, is that?
Well, I think one piece of it was when we came to, um, thirty percent design, then a hundred percent design. And I guess my question is, in, in the last year, how long has this project been extended? I know there have been delays.
So Councilmember Whelan, going back to our, our timeline here, originally, the contract started in two thousand and five, and from two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, there was some modifications done. They were, they were executed through the city manager's change order authority and staff's contract allowance authority. And so the project went as the Army Corps did. If the Army Corps received funding, the project continued on. In two thou-
I'm sorry, that was that seven-year lag then?
Correct, and so then in two thousand and nine, staff brought to the council Change Order Number Four, which was after the Army Corps went through a value engineering workshop. And then the project started to gain some momentum. In that year, however, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty, everything was, again, went as the Army Corps did, and it, it, there was no progress, stop, start, stop, start. And so a lot of these change orders were for time to get the current contract with the Army Corps, to get the contract current with Shepherd Wesnitzer.
Understood.
And then now, in, with Change Order Number Thirteen, which occurred in March of this year, that was after the Army Corps received their funding, and they had marching orders to get to final completion. So now we are processing Change Order Thirteen and Fourteen after discussions with the Army Corps to make sure we get and meet the needs of the Army Corps.
Understood, thank you. That was very clear. And do we have any, um, I don't want to say power, but do we have any, uh, way that we can request the finishing, how the, the segments, um, are finished? I know that, that it is already kind of in the plans to do the, the far end of the Rio and work backwards towards, um, City Hall. Is that correct?
Councilmember Whelan, so maybe just to make sure everyone knows, the council understands, and the public that's listening, the Army Corps is the sponsor. And the city is the non-federal sponsor, so the Army Corps would administer the contract, they will look at how they want to phase the project. When we talk with them last, they convey to us that they want to phase the project, Phase One and Phase Two. And so that is what we're operating towards, and that's how we're working with Shepherd Wesnitzer. We're trying to get these tasks that are remaining completed for Phase One first, and then we will go into Phase Two. And again, that's all based upon what the Army Corps is telling us, and so we're just, we're, we're trying to provide for them the best information and the design to meet their needs as they see.
Understood.
Could we have Mr. Barrett jump in, because I believe he has, um, additional information to add to the, to answer the question?
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you. Um, Councilmember Whelan, um, I would, um, you know, I, I really appreciate your question because, uh, you, you had mentioned, uh, Ms. Goodrich, our previous city manager, and we had focused, uh, you know, very clearly on a schedule, and I believe that's what you're remembering.
Yes.
Kind of hard to compare that schedule to where we are today, however. Um, the best I can do is offer that I would say we are about a year behind uh, where that schedule was when we had Ms. Goodrich around as a city manager.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate it. Um, and my final question or a piece of the comment is, I know we're all fully aware that our, uh, partnership with Mountain Line and that Downtown Connection Center is so very important, and that it be done in a timely way. So that's why I'm asking about, you know, at which end of Phase One are we going to begin with? And, and have requests been made that we start at the, uh, western end first and go to the eastern end. That's what I, that's why I'm probing this.
Are there any other questions? Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it makes sense to start at the eastern end, but, um, for, you know, flow reasons. But, um, I do agree with Ms. Whelan about that it would be really advantageous if we could complete the part where the Downtown Connection Center is going to be, just that one block section, so that the Downtown Connection Center can go forward. Uh, you know, we have federal funding to help us with that, and it would be a really shame if that dried up somehow because of we had delays. So I, I would encourage staff, if there's any way we can, to work the Downtown Connection Block, um, early in the process, as early as possible. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Yes, yes, Mr. Barrett's.
Again, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Whelan, uh, Councilmember McCarthy. Yeah, I, I can advise you that staff is well aware of the, um, the other project that we're trying to coordinate into this. Um, I might also add that the, um, the location of the Downtown Connection Center is right on top of what we call the Confluence. Uh, again, as you are all well aware, so we have the Clay Reach that comes in from the west side of town, comes down Mike's Pike, and connects with the reach that's coming down from the peaks through Townsite, again, right into the middle of the Downtown Connection Center. I, I, you know, if there was a way to build that, um, that Confluence area so that we could clear out of the way for the Downtown Connection Center, we'd certainly, uh, love to be able to pull it off. So, uh, right now, I don't have any immediate answers as to how we can coordinate that, but we hear the concern loud and clear, uh, and we will do everything we can to accommodate.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that.
Ms. Whelan?
I'd like to say, um, thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for your support, and, and you know, I can only imagine what this has been like for staff, and I just want to express my gratitude at your hard work, at your vision, at your resilience. Um, all the way through, you, you have been absolutely amazing, filled with grace and professionalism, and I'd just like to say thank you for representing our city in the manner in which you all do. So thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, can we get a motion, please?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve Change Order Number Fourteen, which, with Shepherd Wes, Wes in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and thirty-five. And I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Salas, if you would like that to be your motion, please state it.
Ms. Salas?
Yeah, I'll second that motion with a comment of thanking our team Flagstaff for all their hard work over the years, and, um, you know, the original contract was in two thousand and five. You know, talk about decades in waiting, and, uh, also congratulation to, uh, uh, Trevor, Trevor Henry for, uh, serving with the City of Flagstaff for over twenty years as well. I think he celebrated a twenty-first work anniversary with the City of Flagstaff.
Wow. So Ms. Whelan, are you the second on that?
Yes, ma'am.
So I do see that there's further comment. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and yes, thank you, Trevor, for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and yes, thank you, Trevor, for your service. Thank you, Rick, for your service. Thank you, everybody at the city for their service, um, to all the hard things we're doing, but especially the Rio the Flag. I just wanted to mention that the mayor, myself, and other members of, of Team Flagstaff got to meet with Colonel Bart Alton today and, and kind of walk parts of the Rio and talk about where this is at in the process of, of reaching completion. And, and, and we are excited. Everybody is at the excited, everyone's at the table. Um, we're, we're, we're working with BNSF to see this through. And, and we really appreciate all of our partners and especially the Army Corps of Engineers. But, uh, thank you to Team Flag and, and just wanted to let the council know as well. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to follow up on that. Um, we had a, on a great meeting, socially distant, appropriate, very small, um, with, uh, Colonel Alton today. Um, want to say thank you to Christina, Trevor, um, and Rick Barrett for their work on this project, as well as our city manager, legal staff. We did have, uh, Bob Holmes and, uh, the rest of the team on the line. And we had the opportunity to talk about the Rio. I think it's, um, it's pretty important to point out, you know, Ms. Salas said that the original contract was in two thousand and five. Um, and so when you look at the change orders that have happened over that amount of time, I think it's pretty telling, right? Um, even the expense of the project and, and the way it's gone up. But this project has actually been in the works for over twenty years. And so, um, for us to be at the point that we are now is very exciting. I think that council just needs to be mindful of the fact that while it is our number one project and we are working on it diligently, we have a whole host of, um, partners that we work with. Um, not only do we have, um, the concerns and the needs of, of our, our public transit system, but we also have BNSF. We have the State of Arizona. We have the Army Corps of Engineers, and then we have ourselves. So it's definitely a juggling act. And I think that our, not I think, I know that our staff has been absolutely incredible um, in, in, in moving this iceberg, as someone has pointed, um, along. So I just want to say thank you for that. And, um, the Colonel, um, is dedicated as well to this project, understands the importance of it. Um, I believe there's a meeting tomorrow between staff members. I believe that there's meetings, um, tomorrow among staff, staff members, um, to even talk further. And I want to go back to the, um, to Ms. Whelan, because I'm not sure what DCC means. But I just want everyone to know that the Colonel was on site today, and she's very appreciative of the project and definitely a willing, a willing partner. Um, Ms. Barrett?
Mayor, I was just speaking about that I hope that the downtown connection center was part of that conversation and the importance to our community. So thank you.
Yeah, the downtown connection center was brought up and the importance to our community as well. I just want to reiterate that, um, while the downtown connection center is important, it was brought up. People know that there's a federal grant that's associated with that. We are also having to work with our other partners, um, which include BNSF and the State of Arizona. And so while we would like things maybe to go in a certain timeline, that may or may not be possible, um, which is why I just mentioned that there's more than just us involved with this.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, and we do have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
We're now down to item number D nine. This is a consideration approval of a contract. Approval of this is for us to approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Alan T. Ginsburg for the purchase of four two four East Butler Avenue. This would be parcel number one zero four dash zero one dash zero two three for the purpose of public right of way for the Lone Tree Overpass Project. The property consists of a single family dwelling and approximately point eight two acres on the northwest corner of South Colorado Street and East Butler Avenue. Staffs recommend actions that we approve this purchase and that we authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
If you mean, thank you, Mayor Evans. This is Dan Fulk, uh, Community Development Director. Tonight, I'm pleased to present, uh, a purchase contract for your consideration this evening. Uh, as you've stated, this is to purchase a property at four twenty-four East Butler Avenue that we've identified as, uh, necessary for the Lone Tree Overpass Project, which was approved by the Flagstaff voters, uh, two years ago with proposition four twenty. Uh, we did, uh, let's see, go back to August, council approved an ordinance authorizing, uh, the purchase of this property. We did have an appraisal completed that came back at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the property owner has agreed to that purchase price. And so we have the sales contract in front of you. Uh, this is a small property located at the northwest corner of Butler and Colorado. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have this evening.
Council, are there any questions of staff? If not, is there a motion?
Uh, Mayor, this is Charlie, and I move to approve nine D.
Second, McCarthy.
Motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. McCarthy to approve the real estate purchase and sales agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Alan T. Ginsburg and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to fulfill the intent of this purchase and sales agreement. Is there any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to, we're now down to item nine E. This is a consideration and adoption of resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-six. This is a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring a housing crisis for the City of Flagstaff, prioritizing affordable housing within city operations to create safe, decent, and affordable housing opportunities for all community members. Staffs recommend action is that we read resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-six by title only, and then we adopt. It's my understanding that we have four public comment cards for this particular item. I'd like to go ahead and take those comment cards first, those public comments, and then turn the discussion to council. Thank you.
Mr. Tyler Denham, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Tyler Denham. I'm calling in in support of the housing crisis resolution that's before city council. And also I have some comments I think would be helpful to the discussion on the high, housing crisis resolution to clarify two common misconceptions that I've heard come up. First is the misconception that Flagstaff's housing affordability crisis is not about supply and demand. Every report on this, and I can think of at least three, came to the same conclusion. Housing costs in Flagstaff are high because more people want to live in Flagstaff than we have housing for. The city council is free to authorize a fourth report or request expert text testimony, perhaps someone from the NAU economics department, but they are going to say the same thing as I'm saying now. Flagstaff is unique in a dozen different ways, but it is not magically immune from market forces. Second, the misconception that blocking growth in Flagstaff helps the environment. This myth stems, I think, from the idea that if people don't live in Flagstaff, their carbon footprint and environmental impact somehow disappear. It only takes a moment's thought, though, to realize how silly this is. People have to live somewhere. And if they're forced by high housing costs to live far away from the city center, their carbon footprint and environmental impact are drastically greater. And finally, I, I want to expound on something said last week about this debate being a matter of values. That was absolutely correct. There is nothing technically difficult about either the cause or the solution to Flagstaff's high housing cost. To use an old cliche, it ain't rocket science. There's not enough housing, so build more, preferably dense housing close to transient and jobs. Fundamentally, this is about how the city council values the majority of Flagstaff residents who are not homeowners. These residents are struggling to stay in Flagstaff as housing costs creep upward year after year, locked out of homeownership themselves by exorbitant prices. If the city council values these residents, it should act now to bring down housing costs. Part of that being passing the Flagstaff Housing Crisis Resolution. That's my comments. Thank you for your time.
Council, do we have any questions, um, for this individual? Mr. Aslan?
Yes, thank you. Um, I lost track of the speaker's name. I could look it up, but can you tell me your name again?
Uh, my name is Tyler Denham.
Tyler, yes. Thank you for your comments. Um, this is Councilmember Aslan. I want you to know that I don't disagree with any single thing that you just said just now. I realized that you wrote a, a pretty, um, emotional and impassioned email, uh, to all of council addressed at me last week. Uh, but I think it's important to reiterate to you that I don't disagree with anything you just said. I think that you were truly misunderstanding a lot of the points I was trying to make. And, uh, I, I guess I'll, I'll throw this back out as a question. Um, of, of course, there's a slight, uh, supply and demand element to this. I just don't think it helps with the affordability gap. As we're building more houses, I see more people being able to pay full market value and often pay cash to move into those houses. I do think that there is a housing ladder. I mean, I, 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 I appreciate that concept and I'm aware of it. And I understand that if we're going to get people to homeownership, they need a variety of different kinds of stock to start from and to move up through. And I think it's important that we are, as we're building houses in Flagstaff, that we're doing so in such a way that we're prioritizing the existence and the strength of that ladder and creating opportunities for people to move up through it. But I, I, you know, it's, I, I think, I, I think you're absolutely right when you said that there are more people wanting to live in Flagstaff than there are houses. And so my question to you is, I mean, how, and so how are we going to build for the people who already live here and can't afford to stay as opposed to, uh, just letting market forces drive the process? And everything we build being at full price and available to cash purchasers?
Yeah, so I do have a response to that. Um, first, I do think there's some elements of truth in what you're saying. And that you can't completely solve housing affordability just by building more housing. Um, there's always going to be a certain small segment of the population that, you know, have lost their jobs or, um, drug addiction and other personal issues are without housing. Um, but the majority of people are going to be helped by bringing down the median home price. And there's a second element of truth as well. You talked about how you're frustrated that all the new housing that's being built is really expensive, so it feels like it's only allowing wealthy people to move into Flagstaff. Yes, that's true. But that's because housing is so expensive. And enough housing that prices come down, that's going to keep happening. Only wealthy people are going to be able to move to Flagstaff if housing remains expensive. And at the moment, without building any housing, what you're having is that young professionals, um, lower income families, middle income, middle income families are already being forced out by the high, high housing costs. So you just have to build housing, bring down housing costs overall.
All right, if, if we're building stuff that's, uh, for lack of a better, um, phraseology, stuff at the bottom of that housing upward mobility ladder, is that the stuff we should be focusing on? It's also good for intel.
Yes, I, I would say you need to build all kinds of housing because as what happens is as you build new housing, people, wealthier people in Flagstaff tend to move into that nicer housing, and they vacate the houses they were previously in, which allows other people lower down the income ladder to move up into those houses. It's a little bit, uh, to use an analogy, it's a little bit like, uh, you know how hermit crabs? They form those little lines, and then each one switches to the next larger shell? It's a little bit like that. You build more housing, other people who are in substandard housing that they don't enjoy as much, they're willing to pay more for nicer housing. They move up into the new housing, vacating and freeing the housing they previously had for other people who are lower income.
Tyler, that's a fantastic analogy, and I'm going to use it if I have your permission to do so.
Yeah, of course.
Again, I, I don't disagree with any of that. And I, I think now we're getting at the solution to this problem. And I also don't think that it's at all in conflict with our, our ambitious goals for getting to carbon neutrality. And you're right about, um, I, 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 I never said that we can reduce our carbon footprint by making sure we keep Flagstaff small. In fact, um, under our city, uh, apparatus, the more people that live here doing business in a community that is dedicated to carbon neutrality, uh, we're having that, that double dip impact on having them here instead of somewhere else where they're not paying attention to those sort of things. I just have one more question for you, Tyler, if I may, Mayor. It, during, uh, all of your speakings this evening, you have spoken very clearly about this in terms of a housing crisis. And I, well, I guess this isn't as much of a question as a comment, but I'm hoping that we can keep our language focused on the housing crisis and, uh, move this, this, this resolution forward, uh, under that context. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Well, I do have a follow-up to that. Um, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, do you mind if I jump in?
Yeah.
Uh, Tyler, are you still with us?
Uh, yes, I'm still on the line.
Tyler, thank you so much for your, your comments and your advocacy here. Um, you know, going along the last comment that Councilmember Aslan was talking about, do you feel that this is a crisis or an emergency?
I, I do. It's been a slow burning crisis.
Right.
Um, it's the kind of thing that has snuck up on us after decades of inattention. And I would say at this point, it, it's grown large enough that we really need to do something. I mean, if you go through that citizen's petition, there's lots of good statistics there. We've got lots of good reports that have been released since two thousand and sixteen on this. If we, we need to bring attention to this, we really need decisive action. If declaring this a crisis is what we need to do that, then yeah, let's declare this a crisis. Get the appropriate resources put towards it.
Tyler, you say, are you trying to, are you meaning emergency or crisis?
Uh, I, I'll admit, the distinction, uh, what, what are you envisioning the distinction between emergency versus a crisis?
I mean, that's a great question. And council is having dialogue on that topic, but, you know, I think like you said, it's been an ongoing, growing crisis. But at this per point, you know, the question is, is it an emergency? And I think it's more for council and the public in regards to political will. But, uh, council, I guess we'll have that discussion. Um, thank you for, for your response, Tyler.
Thank you for having me on to talk.
Okay, I think we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you. Ms. House, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, and city council. First of all, I'm supposed to acknowledge that while I'm a member of the Housing Commission, I am speaking as a private citizen. I'm calling to speak in support of the resolution to prioritize affordable housing within city operations. This resolution calls for the city to prioritize the creation of safe, decent, and affordable housing opportunities for all community members. As a community member, I fully support the efforts to both make housing in Flagstaff more affordable and attainable and to increase the supply of housing in Flagstaff. This is an opportunity for the city to meaningfully partner with the development community in Flagstaff to address this issue and recognize the need for partnership and collaboration to provide significant housing solutions. In the past, I have spoken to council in support of such action and again call on council to pursue meaningful decisive action in this matter. I understand that not all members of council agree that this is a matter of supply and demand, and I respect that opinion. However, the fact is that in the state of Arizona, roughly seventeen thousand new housing units are needed annually to meet the needs of its citizens. And that is no different in the area of Flagstaff. This is the time for decisive action and pursuit of new development approaches and partnerships within the industry and community to meet the and partnerships within the industry and community to meet the needs of Flagstaff residents. I thank you for your consideration of this measure and hope that it is but the first step in a process to create lasting, meaningful change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. House. Are there any questions for Ms. House? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Devana McLaughlin, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Devana McLaughlin, and I am honored to serve as the CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. I appreciate this council's dedication to increasing affordable housing resources and urge the council to adopt the housing crisis resolution before you tonight for consideration. I know council discussed last week if the resolution should include the word "emergency." I would hope council recognizes that the housing crisis our community faces is a true emergency and needs to be addressed with urgency, dedication, and concerted effort. I agree with Mayor Evans' comments last week that we've simply gotten used to living with this crisis and because of that, do not recognize how dire the current conditions are for our community members. However, I also understand that the word "emergency" itself does not change the resolution. Please move forward tonight with the resolution, with or without the word "emergency," but understanding that the goal of the resolution is to dedicate resources and move the needle on affordable housing for our residents. I thank you for your consideration and time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and appreciate your support of affordable housing efforts to benefit those in our community in need.
Are there any, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. McLaughlin? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Devana. Thank you so much for being with us. Devana, I was just curious if you could speak to your work during COVID and what you're seeing on the front lines in our community and what you're looking at as you look ahead to the months to come.
You know, thank you, Vice Mayor Shoney, for that question. You know, I think COVID has kind of put into stark reality how fragile the economic situation is for many of our Flagstaff families. We've talked for years that a lot of families who are housing cost burdened and paying too much of their monthly income for housing are one life event away from having to make really tough choices. And unfortunately, I think COVID for some is that life event. And we know with furloughs and shutdowns and layoffs, families are struggling to pay their rent. I was on a call this morning with housing providers in our community and Michelle Axland from Coquenino County reported that they're seeing hundreds of families applying for rental assistance. And now these families are in need of three to four months worth of rental assistance. So it's not trying to pay, you know, December's rent, but trying to catch up from the hole that they're in. We know that there is a moratorium on foreclosures, not foreclosures, a moratorium on evictions that's ending at the end of this month. And it's been discussed that it's a hidden wave coming our way, and there's no way to even know how many families are going to be impacted by eviction in January and February because they can't catch up and get those rents paid. We've seen calls for foreclosure assistance, and we know that that wave is coming as well, not as quickly as evictions, but, but down the road, as it takes a few months longer typically to get foreclosed on than it does to be evicted. We know that there is increasing demand on our front door coordinated entry system. We've seen reports in the newspaper of domestic violence calls being up in the city of Flagstaff, and we know victims are more likely to be stressed or victimized during times of economic turmoil in the family and that that causes additional incidences of violence. So across the board, from folks who are experiencing homelessness, to folks who are renters, to folks who are homeowners, COVID has had an impact, and I haven't even talked about health impacts, and that's all economic. And so, you know, it's just, it puts into stark reality for me that housing is healthcare and housing helps move the needle on so many of our social outcomes that we want for our, for our community and for the families who live here.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Joe, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff, Joe Galley, 101 West Route 66 of the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. I serve as the Senior Advisor for Public Policy. I'm going to provide some comments on item number nine E, I believe it is, resolution number 202066, and then some personal thoughts. First of all, thank you for the rather lengthy discussion, two plus hours, last Tuesday. We listened to that intently and are grateful for your attentiveness to this particular issue. We know this is, we believe it to be the number one challenge facing the community, but it certainly is in the top two or three of the very most important issues facing our community today. With, and we're grateful for this particular resolution because it requires a plan and not a short-term plan, but a long-term plan, a 10-year plan, to be brought forward for further discussion and consideration. And we know this problem didn't happen overnight, and it won't be, it won't be solved overnight. So having a longer-term plan, I think, is a critical component of this resolution that we like in there. We also like that the private sector is to be engaged to be a solution specifically for our workforce housing needs and providing housing that's attainable to local residents. So we're grateful for that language. It seemed to have gotten worked out over the last week. And then I'll add that there were two thoughts based on the two-hour discussion last week that we thought were maybe missing, and I brought this up with one member of council since last Tuesday's meeting, and that, the first one is that there's no mention of engagement with the county here. You know, the problem really isn't just a city problem, it's a regional problem. I think we probably all agree on that. And we would encourage you to, in future meetings with joint sessions with Coquenino County, to have housing on an agenda. I know you spent a lot of time talking about forest health, flood control, and other important issues facing Northern Arizona and our regional economy, but maybe housing could be on a future agenda. That's just one recommendation. The other is that, you know, in two hours of discussion on housing last week, we didn't hear one from our Community Development Department or the Community Development Director. We think there's a lot of credit to be given to the Community Development Department because they have pushed a lot of housing forward recently, and there's a lot of housing that's to come forward in future months and years that's in the pipeline that this mayor and council has passed. And so we also know that the construction sales tax has managed to really be a boon to the city's bottom line in terms of the budget during a downturn in the economy from the pandemic. So with that, I will, I'd like to make one personal comment before I'm available for questions, and that is that this may be the last time that the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce gets to acknowledge the work of outgoing.
Hi, Joe, I'm afraid your time is up.
Just real quickly, if I could, I just want to thank Councilman Odegaard and Councilwoman Wayland for their attentiveness to our community issues and their service, and then particularly Mayor Evans. Thank you. You've managed the city during a very difficult time with great poise. And on behalf of the chamber, we thank you publicly for your service to our community, and I'm happy to take questions.
We're going to go to Mr. Aslan.
Hi, Joe. Actually, I have a, I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, exactly what is the chamber's feelings about our outgoing council members and mayor?
I'm sorry, you know, I get that the time is really important, and you've spent a lot of time today attending to cities' issues, the cities' issues, and so I, I'm grateful. There's a couple of key things. One item that was on the agenda earlier tonight, the Rio de Flag, I know that, that, you know, without the mayor keeping the train on the tracks and the stick-to-it-iveness with Councilman Odegaard back in DC and Councilwoman Wayland's persistence, you know, that, that project would go on another 20 years without the opportunity that we're in today to really get that done. And it's so important to the community, and the business community's been supportive of that to date. So thank you for the opportunity to extend, again, our gratefulness for the service. We probably won't have another chance before the new mayor and council are sworn in, so thank you.
You bet. And Joe, so I think the, the correct for me is, as we're, as we're developing and building more houses, that we are making sure it's available to a much greater extent. You know, whatever the existing pot is, more of it needs to be going to workforce and affordable housing recipients. What, what is, what, what can the chamber commit to, or can you commit to a process for committing to a couple concrete things that you guys can be doing to pressure developers and builders to make more of whatever it is that is the, you know, 100% total of available housing focused on and geared toward allowing people to climb that ladder and accessibility for lower-income residents?
Yeah, Your Honor and Councilman Aslan, thanks again for the opportunity to address these very critical questions, and it's a very, very good question, and I don't think there's an easy answer because as it's been noted in previous conversations on this subject, even on an additional item earlier on this agenda as it related to the two or two-point-something acres over Presidio, you actually heard from one of our good chamber members and developers in the community, and he talked about some of the financial hurdles as it relates to that particular piece. You know, each of these pieces that we'll look at moving forward are very unique because our community's unique, the landscape's unique, there's a lot of, I'm not a developer, but I know enough from having been here at the chamber for over a decade that there's, there is a number of challenges related to to getting that answer that you're looking for, and that is actually creating a unit that folks can get into, whether it's a bottom level or middle, middle level, or so that there's actually movement within folks whose income grows and they can, you know, to use the hermit crab shell analogy, which I thought was a really good analogy from a previous speaker. So what the chamber can commit to is to continue to push for opportunities where we can engage our development community, who are the experts in these items. You know, the, the city nor the chamber are builders. And quite frankly, we need to get the building community to tell us what their hurdles are and what makes it easier for them to get more units on the street, and I think we'll see an array of different things. And then, of course, there's, you know, the resolution is full of items related to what the city can do too, and we think that's good. And the city and certainly the Housing Director Sarah Dar has been at this for quite a bit, quite a long time, and knows the ins and outs of this better than anybody else, and so, and I'm sure she'll speak later on here. But, you know, to your point, Councilman Aslan, I'm looking at the local market report. I wanted to share these. I didn't think I'd have time, but I'll, I'll just take a quick moment and share it. This was printed in the Flagstaff Business News, October 2020 issue. The median selling price of a home from, from September 28, 2017 to 2018 was $385,000. From 2019 to 2020, that same time period, the end of September, 2019 to 2020, the median selling price of a home was $475,000. That's a $90,000 increase, almost a 25% increase over a two-year period. And so the market places a lot of pressure, no question, and certainly low-interest rates and a whole host of other factors drive demand towards Northern Arizona and to our city. And, you know, we'll commit to continue to engage and, and, and work with the Housing Commission on solutions. And you know what else we'll do? We'll, you know, we'll commit to engage the Board of Supervisors too because we think there's a opportunity for them to also provide solutions for workforce housing outside the city limits but within our community that will benefit businesses in the city and employees in the city.
What about state legislative patches?
Your Mayor, Your Honor, and Councilman Aslan, you know, we do engage at the state level on a number of items. We're also engaged at the federal level, big proponents of opportunities from the federal level, including more recently PPP to help support our press businesses and other mechanisms through the Small Business Administration Department Treasury. So, you know, we pay attention to a lot that comes out of Washington. HUD, I'm not an expert on HUD policies. I would defer to the Housing Director. I think she's quite, quite well-spoken on those opportunities, and we'd certainly support more assistance from HUD. And I'm not sure what the state could do or would do. It's not typically in the state's mission to get engaged in the housing development, but if there's opportunities there, we'll certainly consider it.
You know, part of my concern, Joe, is when we talk about the supply and demand thing and making more of the, the available pool, or whatever that pool is going to be, getting a higher percentage of it out to folks who need homes who are already here. You know, it happened tonight. We hear from developers that it's just cost prohibitive. They'd love to do more in terms of providing, you know, lower, lower costs to more of the median income. But it just, it just hurts their margins too much, and they're already so strapped. And it's just, it's just the same story over and over and over again. So what I see happen is that these homes are built, but they're built for people who are only able to take them by moving in from the outside. And it doesn't, it doesn't dig into the problem that we're here to discuss. And I think some, some of those things can be dealt with at the state legislature. And if chambers of commerce around the state were more willing to recognize that and get behind and become allies in, in these legislative fixes that, that allow developers to be brave and to build more of whatever they're going to build to make a higher percentage of it available to lower-income people. I think that'd be great. I'd love to talk through that more with you and hear the discussions that are coming out of the chamber's decision-making process around what you guys focus on and advocate for. That'd be a nice addition to your, to your list. Thanks, I'm done.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilman Aslan, I'll just make a real quick comment on that because I know we're long on time here, but I'll, I'll say this. I'll commit to you to go to the state legislature this coming session with you to talk about these issues. I'm happy to do that and look forward to that opportunity. And, and I also think, you know, we don't disagree with you and where you are on, on the housing issue in our community, much like your earlier speaker, the first speaker who spoke tonight. Because we're sensitive to the impact that the housing prices have on business attraction. Not just keeping, making housing affordable for current employees, but for businesses that would come here to help grow and strengthen our economy and lift our bottom line and lift revenues to the city. We need to have a market slice that employees can slide into because we lose those opportunities to other communities, both in Northern Arizona and in the major metro areas.
Thank you for that commitment. We'll hold you to it, I'm sure.
I just want to mention to Councilmember Aslan, there's actually a lot that can be done at the state level regarding affordable housing, not only here in Flagstaff, but in our state in general. I'd be more than happy to forward that information to you, as I will not be on council. But hopefully, this will be a topic that council would like to go forward and lobby not only at a federal level, but at our state level. And again, there are some direct things that the state can do to assist in this effort. With that, I see that Mr. McCarthy would like to make a motion, but that was our last public speaker on this item. I'd actually like to go back and have staff do the brief presentation that they prepared for us, then I'll go back to Mr. McCarthy. Ms. Dar?
Mayor and Council, Sarah Dar, Housing Director. I'm waiting for my screen to show up. It looks like it has. Thank you for the opportunity to review a few minor changes that occurred between last week and this week. And I'll jump right into it. Before I do that, however, I realized last week after I finished speaking that I was quite negligent in recognizing the other members of the team that have worked with us. My voice is the one that you're hearing, and I did put my face up earlier, but I now can't figure out how to do it at the same time as presenting. So you're, I'm the one you're hearing. I'm the one you often hear. However, I'm surrounded by an incredible team of people that I have the privilege of working with. Notably, on this item, both Leah Bloom and Justina Costa did a huge, huge part of the lift on this. And Christina Rubeclava was also a critical piece of our city team. And we were privileged to work with the submitter of this petition, Devana McLaughlin. Unlike some of, I guess the, not some of, the other citizen's petition that came in speaking about a climate crisis, this petition was not accompanied by a, a this petition was not accompanied by a, a resolution. So what we drafted as staff, oh, here's my timeline. We know our timeline. It would spend fairly quickly. Petition received October 13th. Fair item on October 19th, work session October 24th, which was last week. And we're back here tonight on December 1st, if you can believe that it is December. So the petition that came in, um, did not have an accompanying resolution. So we did work with the petitioner and with our housing and legal team in order to draft the one for consideration. Um, I wanted to take one quick moment and review the title of the issue coming in with the citizens petition and the action requested by the community, which was Flagstaff's response to our local community's long-term housing crisis. And the specific action requested by the community was that Flagstaff City Council declare a housing crisis in the city of Flagstaff through emergency resolution. This action should be followed by the prioritization of housing as a focus of investment, action, and support by the city. We reviewed the resolution in detail last week. Um, there are a few changes. Last week, Councilmember McCarthy, um, suggested some language that would add encouraging more economically priced housing construction by the private sector to address Flagstaff's workforce housing needs and to increase attainable housing opportunities for and occupied by local residents. With the privilege of working with Councilmember McCarthy to refine this language a little bit, it's a bit different from what you saw him present last week. Um, however, uh, we didn't, we didn't change the concepts. We clarified a few things. During that, um, comment period last week or during the council discussion, it was also mentioned up here that it felt like the plan elements listed were exclusive to ways city resources could best be utilized. So we inserted the language "will include but not be limited to", because that was not our intent in working on this language, that those be the exclusive categories. The only other change between, um, the draft resolution you considered last week and gave input on was to add the words "to lobby and support federal and state legislation" to increase the amount of funding available for the preservation and construction of affordable housing. I promised you a short presentation. That was probably as short as I get. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I also want to point out that our housing crisis resolution number for your consideration tonight is 202066, um, which we'll be able to remember as it's related to the main thoroughfare through our committee, Route 66. So we were lucky to snag that number, although we had nothing to do with it. So if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Counsel, are there any questions for Ms. Dar? Not seeing questions for Ms. Dar. I'm going to go back to Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just want to thank, uh, Justina Costa and Leah Bloom and, and Sarah Dar for working with me on the wording. They changed, they, you know, polished it up a little bit without really changing the intent. So I would like to read Resolution 2020-66 by title only with the wording that is in the packet that came out this week.
Mr. Asland has seconded that, I believe. Mr. Asland, can you verbalize that?
Enthusiastically, I second that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made by, um, Mr. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Asland. Is there any further conversation? Not seeing any. Um, there is Mr. Odegaard. Mr. Odegaard?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I really appreciate, um, everyone bringing this resolution forward. And I, me personally, I would like to see the word "emergency" put into it. And the reason why I say that, because if you look up the definition of emergency, and I did that, and "emergency" says "a serious, unexpected, and often dangerous situation requiring immediate action." I like the last thing, "immediate action." Well, crisis doesn't have that word "action" to it in that definition when you put crisis, where emergency does. You know, we got an email from one of our residents who's a chef here in town that's living in his van. Uh, and that's real. You know, there can be no more emergencies than that, than someone having to live in a vehicle and work here in Flagstaff, but all they can afford is to live in their vehicle. And, you know, that breaks my heart. I'm sure it would break most people's hearts when, how could there be any more emergency than make sure that person has a roof over their head? We've heard last week, 2,800 residents plus are waiting for permanent housing here in our community on a waiting list. And we heard of someone on a waiting list for a decade. To me, you know, after a few months, I would give up and be, um, be discouraged here in our community that I could not be here in our community and live here in our community. And I, I would really like, we saw what I said earlier, emergency resolution. I think now is more than time to declare the emergency concerning housing. So that's my thoughts. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So are you making an amendment, is that an amendment to the underlying motion?
Yes, of adding the word "emergency" as was presented.
Seconded.
So there's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Whelan to add the word "emergency" to the motion. I'm going to go to Mr. Asland. Um, actually, I'm going to go to Mr. Asland, because I believe he has a comment. Then we'll go back to the Vice Mayor as well as Ms. Whelan. Mr. Asland?
Mayor, actually, this is Sterling. I, I just, the city attorney, I just want to clarify, is that to add the word "emergency" in the place of the word "crisis"?
Mr. Odegaard?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Asland?
Uh, well, thank you. I, I realize that Vice Mayor and, and Councilmember Whelan chimed in before I did, but at your discretion, I'm happy to go ahead and kick off.
Because we're talking about the under, we're talking about this amendment. Yeah, amendment.
So I, th- this is problematic for me, and if you'll indulge me, I'll take a moment to articulate why. Um, and I want to begin by being perfectly clear. Uh, I fully support the resolution presented to us right now. I agree that we're in the midst of a housing crisis in Flagstaff. Um, I'd even go so far as to call it a catastrophe or a debacle, particularly as it relates to being a problem instigated by policy neglect looking the other way over too many years. Our city absolutely needs the tools and the strong green light from council to tackle this multifaceted problem with strength and from multiple angles. I also realize that we're advocating for this on behalf of a silent block who can't necessarily take time away to be seen and heard the way that climate activists were earlier this year. I do see the silent ones at the center of this. I don't, I don't know how to be more clear about that, but it's obviously worth repeating, because it really does feel to me that from comments made last week from council and also from constituents, that my dedication and commitment to approaching this old and dire problem from a new mandate is somehow called into question. It isn't. Um, so please don't misunderstand my hangups about the language of amendments to this resolution as a lack of recognition of the problem or a lack of commitment to tackling it. I voted to advance this fair item for discussion, and Councilmember Odegaard yourself, you thanked me last week for my important vote on your ordinance amendments, uh, advancing affordability causes, and I'm grateful for that acknowledgement. And my commitment will continue to be registered through action and deed as long as I'm on council. But my hangups about potentially amending this to designate it as an emergency, same as we did with the climate declaration, are real, and for me, they pose significant challenges. I explained at length last week why I see this housing crisis as a fundamentally different beast than the emergency declaration we passed over the summer, recognizing the global existential threat posed by climate change and our local role in taking responsibility for a problem that vastly expands beyond the borders of our city limits. Declaring that emergency was a really, really big deal, a rare use of force in a singular act, something far beyond normal city business as usual. It was utter, it was utterly declarative. And I fundamentally disagree with branding both of these crises with the same mechanistic label. At best, I'm sorry, it's, it's a lazy and trendy approach that dilutes the power of the actions we've already taken toward climate issues. And at worst, I fear it could be perceived by the public as a deliberate watering down of the unprecedented move, the unprecedented move we unanimously undertook over the summer, and it sets these debates possibly on competitive footing, which I don't think they need to be. We can prioritize solving both of these crises, both of which are dire and urgent and hurting far too many people and weakening the strength of our neighborhoods and our community character. Solving issues, these issues can have synergistic effects on each other. They are not mutually exclusive. This isn't a zero-sum game. But these problems are not the same. They're different. They have different scopes, different timelines, different fundamental physicalities. One is rooted squarely in the baseline scientific facts. If we don't go on a carbon diet, the climate rubber band will snap in our lifetimes, and there will be nothing we can do to fix it. The implications are local and global for all families everywhere and for future generations. The other is clearly a human-based challenge, though very urgent. It involves opinions on what Flagstaff should look like and for who. It involves moral gut calls, shared values, and is fluid in terms of attitude and appetite. It's susceptible to the whims of councils, to advocates and detractors alike. I can support, support tackling both problems and urgently, because I can see and acknowledge both problems. But I can't sanction bringing the same sledgehammer to both fix-it clinics. We owe it to the city to paint these challenges with specific brushes best suited to their scope. The language we use matters. The public is watching. We're going to confuse our citizenry and create headaches for our staff. So I urge you guys, honestly, please consider this. I'm, I'm personally asking you for this compromise. Please, don't introduce this one new word to this resolution. I've, I can get to a yes, enthusiastic support if we agree to avoid this one simple word.
So I'm going to go to the Vice Mayor. Then I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan.
You know, Councilmember Asland, I really do appreciate your, your comments, and I, and I really mean that. Um, and, and I want this to be a unanimous, you know, decision by council. But, you know, at the same time, I guess this is why we're elected to do this, this work, and, and it's not always easy, right? Sometimes we're, we're splitting hairs, um, because I, I do believe this is an emergency. And, and I think that, you know, taking action on, on affordable housing takes strong political will. And, and, you know, just in our two years on council, that you, me, and Councilmember Salas have had, I mean, we've, we've seen and had opportunities of which we've passed up. And, and, you know, some of the debates because of a lack of strong political will. And, you know, as, as we hear from this, Ms. Harris, you know, at times, you know, trying to speak up for the voiceless that we, that you mentioned, it, it, it takes strong political will, and it's, it is often a population that doesn't get represented by elected officials. And so, you know, to me, this document is, is a bunch of words, right? Um, hopefully will lead to political action and, and come up with a plan and, and really, and work towards addressing this. Um, and regardless of whatever word we choose and how we come down on this account body tonight, I really hope that we can all work together to, to move this, this plan forward, because, um, I, I do, I do really believe it is an emergency. Um, and I don't believe it's one versus the other again. And if, if Nicole is from Sustainability is on the line, I love at the end of my comments to, to turn it over to her to talk a little bit about the climate action and adaptation plan and how it talks about housing as part of that plan. Um, but before I, I do that, um, I, I can't, I want to just mention a couple more points. I, I can support tackling both of these topics as emergencies. And I believe that they both are, I really do. And I don't think it dilutes one or the other. Um, I think it's a matter of perspective. I think that, you know, for folks who are facing evictions in January and February, foreclosure evictions, um, that hidden wave that Divana mentioned, you know, those who are facing domestic violence and all the individuals that have had to leave Flagstaff in the, in the past years because of this cost of housing, you know, they would say that this is an emergency. You know, fortunately for all, all of us, and many of us, maybe not all of us, but this might not be an emergency, but I think again, it comes down to perspective and who you ask. We need a plan, and, and I think that this will help take the first steps. Um, I do support this being an emergency and, and that we really need urge, you know, Councilmember Odegaard, I want to thank you for your comments and your leadership. Uh, you know, I too looked up the definition of emergency and, you know, it talks about urgent need for assistance or relief, and I think that that is exactly what this is. This is an urgent need for assistance and relief. And, and if we don't do this, and if this council can't do this, then, you know, I don't know what council can. And I know this council's coming to an end, but, you know, I have faith in the future council, but I also have faith in this current council. And, you know, maybe we're wrestling with some of these harder topics that we need to wrestle with, because these are tensions that the community has and has had for, for ages. And, and, you know, Councilmember Asland, as we talked about last week, you know, it's, it's good, it's good to have these conversations openly and kind of ruffle the feathers and kind of have these discussions. I think it's important, I really do. And at the end of the day, I, I'd like to see us all get on the same page in addressing this, regardless of what we call it. Um, and with that, Nicole, if you're on the line, I'd love to let you speak to the Climate Action Plan, if that's okay, Mayor.
Yeah, that's fine.
Antonopoulos, are you with us? I'm not sure if she is. Um, well, it sounds like she's not. Um, I'll just say that, you know.
We'll go ahead and move to Ms. Whelan. Um, so we can address the underlying motion, then we can go back to the main motion. Perhaps Ms. Antonopoulos can join us for that.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Whelan?
Thank you so much. Um, you know, we heard from Divana about some of the, the factors that are, are working on this um, resolution. We talked, she talked about foreclosures. She talked about the moratorium of evictions coming to an end in December. Um, she spoke about rental assistance and up to, uh, you know, 100 people are asking for that. Um, and it's stressing all of our systems. What we haven't mentioned is the additional stress of, we are not seeing anything from the federal government coming in to help us get through these stressful times for our small businesses. We are looking at, uh, another, um, minimum wage hike, which will stress, again, the people who live here and the small businesses. So this is an emergency. It's definitely an emergency. It is a crisis, and it is emergence, an emergency which needs immediate action. Thank you.
So I just wanted to weigh in very specifically on this amendment to the underlying motion. I am very appreciative of Councilmember Odegaard bringing it forward. You know, I do want to acknowledge, um, um, what Mr. Asland has said. Um, and the fact is that I do believe that we as a council strive to make compromise um, and to try to get to a seven-zero on topics that on topics that we know are important to our community. I would also say that we have not always done that, right? Sometimes it really does come down to not being able to compromise because to compromise would mean that we are straying far from our convictions or what we believe to be the truth. You know, when I sit here and I listen to this conversation, you know, I spoke about 14 minutes last week on this particular topic. I really think it comes down to values. We, as a council, have had at least three different opportunities in the last two years to move the needle when it came to affordable housing in this community. And each and every single time that we were presented with those opportunities, we chose to listen to the voices that were the loudest and the voices that were standing in front of us. And we had various different reasons as to why we did that. We talked about, you know, the fact that perhaps poor people didn't have a car to drive in, even though there was a bus line, a bus stop directly in front of that particular development. We talk about the fact of where are people who are poor? Where is the most appropriate for their houses to be? You know, we talked about they need to be next to services. We talked about a lot of different things, even though the city is only, what, five miles long? And everything is probably a 20-minute walk to get someplace in this city, or if you have an electric bike, like the Vice Mayor, perhaps you can get there a little sooner. You know, I do think it comes down to values. And I think that that has been stated more than once in this conversation. You know, the fact of the matter is, is I wonder how many people on council currently own their home? How many people on council currently own their home? And how many people on council are cost burdened? How many people on council are from the community and have the opportunity to move in, land that great job, and be able to afford the houses that we have here? There is the conversation that perhaps, you know, if we build it, more people will move from outside. You know, some people from outside will definitely move in. But we know right now, for the people who currently live in the city limits of Flagstaff, we are 6,000 housing units short. We're 6,000 housing units short for those individuals. I think that this is an emergency. If you Google, if you go to Uncle Google right now and you type in "housing emergency", you have groups like National Low Income Housing Coalition, the National Coalition of State Housing Agencies, PeopleAction.org, National Alliance to End Homelessness, Governing, that's the magazine that we all get, they're talking about this, Housing Justice League, United Family Network, and it goes on and on and on. That is not, the housing crisis that we are having right now is not unique to our city. If we are going to say that, and I want to acknowledge that too, if we're going to say that the climate emergency is more important because it's global, I would really suggest that we Google "housing crisis" because it's a global issue as well, and people refer to it as an emergency. I also think, in my mind, and this is just me personally, I'm not understanding why it seems to be an "us against them" issue. I spoke to a group today of people that are from Flagstaff, and they were very, very candid in what they had to say. They said, "It's nice that we are saving the environment for Flagstaff for the privileged people that have moved here. What about us? Don't we get to stay here? Or did we just build the town? You know, make sure it looks pretty, and then we have to exit stage left or we have to leave because we can't afford to live here?" I think it is a value statement. I think that declaring a crisis says one thing for council. I think it makes one statement for council. I think for council to say, "You know what? This is an emergency. We have people who cannot afford to live here who are from here. We have people who are working as police officers, teachers, firemen, that can't afford to live here. We have people who are baristas and maids in the city that work in the industries that help create the revenue for the beautiful footstools, the art that we talk about, and all that, that never get the opportunity to actually go and experience any of that, and they can't afford to live here because they're working two or three jobs." I do think that this comes down to values, and I think it comes down to a bold statement from council. And I think it's unfortunate if we can't get to a 7-0, but I think sometimes we just can't. I see that Mr. McCarthy has a comment, and then I'd like to go ahead and act on the underlying motion and move forward with the overall motion. Mr. McCarthy?
Let me get unmuted here. I have a couple thoughts. Well, Mayor, you talked about going to Uncle Google. So I went to Uncle Googled, and I Googled "define emergency", and here's what it says. Noun: A serious, unexpected, and often dangerous situation requiring immediate action. This certainly isn't unexpected. We've had this problem for half a century, so it's not unexpected. So technically, we don't meet the definition of emergency. My second comment is I would like to see this council do this unanimously. And my thought is that if we can't come up with a unanimous decision, then it might be best that we left this to the new council. If we do not change the wording like has been suggested in this amendment, I will definitely support the motion. Okay, I'm looking at my notes, I covered that. I don't see this as the same as the climate emergency. That's debatable. But in my opinion, this is very serious. It's a crisis, but it doesn't meet the definition of an emergency. And I kind of have a problem with using that word as Mr. Aslan does. I'd like to point out that the person that wrote this petition, Ms. McLaughlin, she specifically said she was okay calling it a crisis or an emergency. So she's perfectly happy calling it a crisis, which is what I think we should call it. So what this really boils down to is do you want a unanimous vote or not? Because I'm not going to support it if it has the word "emergency". And then a quick footnote about how this council is always stopping affordable housing projects. Refresh my memory, but the only one I remember since I've been on council is Schultz Meadow, and we definitely stopped that one. And, you know, that's debatable. That was, in all honesty, that was a difficult decision for me back three years ago, or whenever it was. I'll also point out that when we dropped that project, I think we lost, if I remember correctly, like 51 housing units. But then we added in the little parcel across from REI on Lone Tree, and that had more housing units in it. So actually, by dropping Schultz Meadow, we actually improved the affordable housing mix that we were going to get. As we all know, the developer backed out, but that had nothing to do with council. That was the developer doing that. So I guess the bottom line to me is, do you want a unanimous vote or not? If you're willing to compromise and leave this amendment out, then you're going to get a unanimous vote. If you don't, you're not going to get a unanimous vote.
You know, I do want to reply to that, Mr. McCarthy. You know, I want to remind council that we had the opportunity to talk about the Public Works Yard and finishing the one street with five or six bungalows for affordable housing that we were not able to move forward. And I also want to say, Mr. McCarthy, you know, I compromised, right? When it came to the Schultz Pass discussion, I compromised. You know, I was the individual who changed my vote because the community had said that they were going to go, and they were going to pull a citizens initiative so that the entire community could weigh in on that. And that has been four years, and we are still waiting for that particular citizens initiative to come to fruition. And so I want to make sure that people are very clear about what I say when I say that I have compromised. And during that time, we now understand that there are 28,000 people that are still waiting for housing. We understand that there is someone who has been on a waiting list for 10 years. We understand that we have people who are living in their vans and whatnot in the forest. And we understand that we have a problem. Now, I agree with you, if you look at the strict sense of an emergency, right? That this didn't happen overnight. The same thing could be said about the climate issue that we are experiencing globally. That didn't happen overnight. Matter of fact, if you Google "when the climate issue started", it started in the 70s. Yet we still say that that is an emergency right now, today, in 2020. And that was something that was pointed out, I believe, by Al Gore, that there was an issue going on in the 70s. It was like 1972. So I think if we were going to use that strict definition, we would have used it when we declared a climate emergency here in the city. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to point out, Councilmember McCarthy, as you reminisce about Schultz Pass, that the decision from council, because the lack of political will, also threw down the sewer, so to speak, over $500,000 of taxpayers' money, of taxpayers' money. So talk about fiscal responsibility. Talk about all of those things that we were elected to do. And during that case, absolutely dropped the ball on our entire community. Not the select few, but on our entire community, we threw away over $500,000 on that piece of property. Thank you.
Can I comment, Mayor?
I'm going to let you comment, and then we're going to go ahead and take the motion, and we can take it by roll call. Mr. McCarthy?
As far as Schultz Meadow, Ms. Whelan is correct, we lost half a million dollars there. And as I pointed out, that was a very difficult decision. And whatever it was, it was. As far as the maintenance yard, you are correct, Mayor. I stand corrected, I forgot about that one. But I'll also point out that my understanding was that the lease restriction or the restrictions on that land, the way we got it, said what it was for, and it was for recreation, it was not for housing. That's the reason that certain council members were against adding housing because we thought it was in conflict with the existing agreements and arrangements that were on that land. So I'm done.
So I would just say publicly that I would suggest that if council wants to explore that further, they should go ask legal. So now that we're here to the underlying motion, I'd like to take it by roll call, whether or not we want to add emergency to this particular resolution. City Clerk?
Councilmember Whelan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCarthy?
No.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Yes.
Councilmember Aslan?
No.
Councilmember Salas?
Yes.
Mayor Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shimonie?
Yes.
So that motion passes, we're back to the original motion? With that change?
Yes, Mayor.
So is there any more discussion on the original motion? Can we take that by roll call, too?
Councilmember McCarthy?
No.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Yes.
Councilmember Aslan?
Regretfully, no, but I remain committed to the spirit of everything else within that resolution. You can count on that.
Councilmember Salas?
Yes.
Mayor Evans? Mayor Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shimonie?
Yes.
Councilmember Whelan?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you. That motion passed.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring a housing crisis for the city of Flagstaff, prioritizing affordable housing within city operations to create safe, decent, and affordable housing opportunities for all community members as amended.
And just to clarify, that amendment was to declare a housing emergency, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-66?
Move to adopt.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan, and a second by the Vice Mayor, to adopt Resolution 2020-66. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that motion carries 2-0, excuse me, 5-0. We're now down to item number 9F. This is a consideration adoption of Resolution.
Mayor, to clarify, that was 5-2.
Yeah, it was 5-2.
That's what I was going to say, thank you.
I clarified it right after I said it.
Oh, thank you.
So we're now down to item number 9F. This is a consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2020-33. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending City Code Title VII, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 03-001-0014, Water Conservation, to prohibit the use of potable water to fill amenity lakes, ponds, and other bodies of water, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommend action at tonight's meeting is that we read Ordinance Number 2020-33 by title only for the first time. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Erin Young, Water Resources Manager. Before you tonight is staff's response to a request made by Councilmember Aslan at City Council's November 3, 2019, meeting for staff to investigate if there are any reasonable restrictions that can be adopted on the use of potable water. Former Water Services Director Brad Hill talked with Councilmember Aslan this past spring and discussed the alternative I bring forward to council tonight as a possible new restriction on potable water to consider adopting into City Code. Mayor, I do have a 10-minute presentation I would like to present to council that complements the staff summary. However, I'm also prepared to dive into answering any questions of the council. Would you like me to proceed with my slides, or is council ready for discussion?
I would actually like for you to go ahead and give us the brief so we can then have the discussion. We might not have as many questions.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Staff are bringing forward this policy issue recognizing that Flagstaff's City Code is silent on the types of water that can be used to fill new bodies of water, such as amenity lakes or ponds that could be associated with a new future golf course or associated with new development. Where does our proposed language come from? The state legislature adopted Senate Bill 1200, known as the Lakes Bill, over 33 years ago in 1987 that addressed this issue. The new legislation created ARS 45132, which is Attachment 2 in Your Packet, that prohibits the filling of large bodies of water for landscape, scenic, or recreational purposes unless they are filled with reclaimed water, stormwater, or other, just non-potable water sources. However, that legislation only applies to communities within the state's five active management areas and not to northern Arizona and the city of Flagstaff. The language in statute served as our starting point for what staff are proposing tonight. Staff recommends that City Council consider the reasonable restriction on potable water use by changing code to align with the council's adopted Water Policy C7, uses, allocation, and priority that pertains to the direct reuse of reclaimed water. Policy C1, or I'm sorry, excuse me, C71 states that staff should recommend updates to policies and ordinances that encourage the direct reuse of reclaimed water. And more specifically, Policy C72 states that golf courses and other large turf areas, schools, parks, et cetera, and amenity lakes shall use direct reuse of reclaimed water. The proposed code changes are to the Water Conservation section of code, starting with adding two definitions for body of water and swimming pool. This code would prevent filling bodies of water greater than an Olympic-sized pool in surface area with potable water. Staff are proposing the addition of item E to the No Person Shall list in code that restricts water use underwater availability strategy Level One, Water Awareness. Item E reads that no person shall fill or refill all or a portion of a body of water for landscape, scenic, or recreational purposes unless it is filled with reclaimed water or stormwater runoff that is not subject to appropriation. These supporting points should make it clear that the City Code does not apply to any existing body of water or structures constructed to hold potable water prior to January one, two thousand and twenty-one. The code would allow potable to be used at government facilities open to the public. Item four was added in response to the Water Commission's request to include the option for an exception to be granted by by, well, they wanted to make sure there was an exception, a mechanism for someone to request an exception, so staff added in number four, granting that authority to City Council. With the proposed addition to Strategy Level One restrictions, we no longer need the red text here under Strategy Level Two. The Water Commission did recommend City Council consider adopting this code on the reasonable restriction on potable use, so long as clarification would be added on how an exception could be granted if a need came forward. Lastly, this is an opportunity to update this section of code to reflect our new Water Services division name from the former utilities. And with that, I open the floor to discussion. Thank you.
Okay, council. I see Mr. McCarthy, followed by Mr. Odegaard.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. How was it decided the area that this would apply to for, you know, a pond, roughly equal to an Olympic-sized swimming pool? I would suggest that this is a very good change, and it probably should apply to things a little bit smaller than that.
Councilmember McCarthy and Mayor, we basically took the language in the AMA code, in the ARS code for AMAs, and decided to leave it up to council whether they wanted to discuss changing the square footage, or if you'd rather apply a volume of water.
So
Erin, sorry, this is Sterling. Maybe you could clarify for the council and the public what AMA stands for.
Oh, excuse me, the active management areas of the state that are more tightly regulated on water uses.
Actually, that has a pretty solid rationale, but I would be interested in whether council members might want to lower that number. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to Mr. Odegaard.
Okay, so this ordinance would deal with a little more larger volumes of water than not just like the small little things, like whatever it may be someone might have at their home. That, just for clarification.
Councilmember Odegaard, that is correct. The smaller sort of domestic-sized ponds and such wouldn't be considered.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, Ms. Salas.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions. First, does it cover a pond that is eventually filled with fish? For recreational use? In a private property setting?
Mayor and Councilmember Salas, this would apply to a recreational lake with fish, provided the surface area is over thirteen thousand square feet.
Thank you. And first of all, thank you for the presentation, Erin. Very well informed. My next question has something to do with public input and public consultation. I believe this went through the Water Commission, but has this been vetted to to the community at large?
Mayor and Councilmember Salas, this has not been vetted other than through being on the agenda with the Water Commission and tonight's agenda in front of you.
Yeah, see, like, yeah, I would, I would really prefer to have, you know, a public comment and engagement in this in this proposed ordinance.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Mr. Aslan.
Off mute again here. Thank you. I wanted to take just a moment to thank Erin Young and Brad Hill. This is very exciting to me. It was interesting to see the evolution of this come through and finalize itself here. I'm clearly very supportive of it and looking forward to council's thoughts and recommendations on this.
So, in understanding that, council, is there a motion? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I haven't had a motion quite yet, but I just wanted to weigh in really quickly and just mention that I, too, am open to different size or quantities of water to, you know, consider a lesser amount. And that my question to Erin was if you could maybe just give us some examples of things in our community that would fit within these categories that we're talking about? And, you know, some of the sizes, whether they're Olympic-sized pools or less.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I could give the example of the Wall Aquatic Center at NAU. Another example that comes to mind would be the Ice Arena, Jay Lively Ice Arena, which is, I believe, sixteen thousand, actually, I haven't measured it, but a standard ice rink is sixteen thousand square feet in area, I believe. And I have not looked at the sizes of other pools or facilities that would apply here. So those are the examples I have.
And Erin, I apologize. It's been a long day. And Jay Lively uses potable water, correct?
Yes.
So in passing this, if we were to move forward with this, how would that affect Jay Lively?
So long as Jay Lively does not expand in size, they would be allowed to continue using potable water to make ice. If they wanted to expand in size, the process would be they would come before City Council. However, because they are a government facility, let me go back here. Item two reads, "The body of water is located in a recreational facility that is open to the public." So they would actually fall under item two as an exception. So I take that back. If it were a private ice rink, then they could petition council to be granted use of potable water.
Okay, thank you. That was all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to the city manager first, and then I'll go back to Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Just to comment with regard to the sizing issue. Olympic pools are frequently looked upon as a standard in terms of pool size, representing a larger standard, and they are in the thirteen thousand square foot area. I worry that if we were to go below that, we would be putting in prohibitions against future pools of that sort that would be used recreationally or competitively or otherwise. So I totally understand the gist of this policy, and I think we all agree that it's a good policy, and it's been vetted with the Water Commission. But I do, I'm of the opinion that further restricting it in terms of size may bring about some consequence that is unforeseen at this time, but could become problematic in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
I'd like to say thank you for your work on this. I, too, am leaning more towards a smaller amount of water and perhaps, you know, the process being that they would be, they would, if somebody wanted to apply for variation, they would come before the Water Commission. But I think, I think we can get smaller than an Olympic-sized pool. You know, does that have a diving area up to twelve foot deep? When we're talking about water, are we just talking about a rectangle?
Mr. Odegaard, then Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, this ordinance probably would not apply to the university. And the reason why I asked to make sure it doesn't apply to the university is I believe the university wants to have a skating rink there. And yes, Erin, you're right. It's about seventeen thousand square foot for a hockey rink. And I just want to make sure we didn't stand away with their desire to have a hockey rink there at NAU.
Mayor, Councilmember Odegaard, I may have to defer here to Sterling and Legal as to whether this would apply to NAU, this code. But if it does, they could come forward to City Council for an exception.
Also, they can use reclaimed water, right? I apologize, but you can use reclaimed water for ice, correct?
Yes.
Yes, you can for ice. Whether or not that would be what NAU planned to do or not, I'm not sure. And whether or not this would apply to them, NAU is exempt from certain policies and regulations of the city. I would have to check and find out if this would be one of them. But I can do that and get back to you, council.
Okay. Ms. McCarthy?
So just to address the city manager's comment, I would be fine with swimming pools, you know, like an Olympic-sized swimming pool. But as far as ponds that are recreational, like in a little park setting or something, I would think that we should put more limits on it than that. So I might suggest that before we do second read, that the staff take a look at considering a smaller area, and then also have a different rule for swimming pools than we would for landscaping pools. If, I didn't really count, I heard myself and Ms. Whelan, and I'm not sure if there was four that were interested in looking into that, or if we should just drop it.
I'm gonna go to Mr. Aslan.
I am interested in looking into that while we have time to do so. You know, in my mind, this came about regarding a private developer wanting to put a body of water somewhere using potable water. Potable water, and I bet, I bet it's a flip of a coin whether or not that body of water would be about the same size as an Olympic swimming pool in volume or not. So it's kind of on the threshold there. And it seems to me that we have this exemption mechanism in place where we could have further discussions about any particular contextual matter of someone wanting to put water somewhere.
City Manager, can you help me? I do believe that there's four people that were interested in discussing the size.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is very good discussion, and I'm glad we're having it. And it does go back to a comment from Councilmember Salas about public vetting, and perhaps a continued discussion of this will help accomplish that. That is, you know, these are public meetings, opportunity for public input. If we further the dialogue, we will increase that public inclusion. I do believe it's a worthy topic for us to continue to explore. And I am not advocating an outcome here. This is a policy decision for council. But the scenario that comes to my mind is a swimming pool that's Olympic-sized, which is not unusual, that may not fit neatly within the qualifications or the exemptions that are now before you, i.e. a private club, a racket club, a racket and swim club, a country club, a number of facilities that could occur that would operate with a large pool that does not fit neatly here. And while, yes, that could be something where an exception could be granted, I think the question for council to wrestle with is, is that the pursuit, the direction you want to take? If the intention here was to really preclude large bodies of water being utilized for landscape purposes, for natural aesthetic purposes, for fishing and outdoor recreation, that really are distinct from swimming facilities. And I recall the discussion that led to this. I was present at that time, and it was a natural pond in a natural setting. It was not a swimming pool. So I, Mayor, I don't, I think I'm gathering that there's enough consensus to further the discussion and perhaps direct staff to carve a distinction out between those two different types of bodies of water.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Ms. Whelan to verbalize her remarks. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Councilmember Salas's point is extremely valid, and we do need to vet this through the community, see what they're thinking. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's interesting. Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, just to clarify, as City Manager Clifton mentioned, the item before you is for amenity lakes. I know we've been talking about other things such as ice rinks. But the definition of it, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was for amenity lakes that could be used for landscaping purposes and such, but people may also use them for recreational swimming, you know, boating and things like that. The measurement of the size that this was taken from, as she mentioned, was from the active management areas throughout the state that have that Olympic-sized pool size, and that is a good basis, a legal basis to defend on. That's one thing that I just want to note going forward. Picking a smaller amount without some sort of basis or grounds upon which we're using to set that as a benchmark. It's easier to defend from a legal perspective, and I don't want to get into too much legal advice there. But I just want to state that for the record before we go any further. It doesn't mean we can't explore it, as council has asked us to do. Absolutely. It doesn't mean we can't explore it, as Council has asked us to do. Absolutely, we can do that.
So you recommend that your 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 comments today then are for us to focus on what is before us? And then if there's Council direction to go and explore further, then that's what Council should give direction for?
Correct. And again, I have no problem working with staff to explore further. I'm not trying to, I don't have a recommendation either way. I just wanted to point out why the AMA measurement was one that we went went with. It's something that we can use as a baseline.
Okay. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I believe we have direction to further this discussion, bring it back to Council. Maybe highlighting the distinction that has been discussed. The ordinance before you, as Legal Counsel has pointed out, does speak to amenity lakes. But this has drifted into a discussion of swimming pools and if it, if it's Council's desire to hammer on that distinction a little bit more and bring it back, we we can do that.
Now, would that include Ms. Solis's recommendation that there's more public engagement if it's going to include things such as swing pools?
Madam Mayor and Council, I would, you know, I would suggest, this is just me talking, I would like to vet this with the staff. But you know, one approach here is to put this back in front of Council at a future work session, make sure the public's aware of it and notice it as such. And allow for that public vetting to occur in a work session. I don't know that there's any urgency tied to this. I think it did start as a fair item and we're looking to have closure on it, but we're at your pleasure here. Council would like to see this discussion protracted a little bit more with more opportunity for public input. We can go that route.
Council, given the four of you are interested in further fleshing it out and at least two of you have stated that you like to see more public input, I would suggest that we allow staff to go back and put it on a future work session agenda item for a more robust discussion. Mr. Odegaard.
Yeah, I really do agree with that. This, I believe, needs a little bit more of a discussion and especially in a work session type setting on this. To be honest, this caught me a little off guard, you know, I was trying to rack my brain of how this came about. And as we were talking this evening, you know, and plus, we did receive an email earlier of how this came about. And and I really agree with you, Mayor, that really this needs to be a more of a work for, a work session discussion to make, to provide clarity on this and then move forward. Because I do believe we do need to move this item forward, but in a manner that has clarity to it. Thank you.
I don't see other Councilmembers commenting. And so I'm going to say, City Manager, please go forth and that Council will see this on a future agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Sorry to interrupt, this is Sterling, but as it was posted for a first read tonight, I I would suggest you make a motion to postpone it indefinitely until after that work session occurs.
Okay. Is there a motion to postpone this indefinitely until after the work session?
So moved, McCarthy.
Is there a second?
Second, Solis.
There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by Ms. Solis to postpone this particular item indefinitely until after a scheduled work session. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. We're now down to item number ten. This is Council Liaison Reports. This is very specific to committees that we sit on as Councilmembers. Are there any Council Liaison Reports to be given tonight? Okay, not seeing any. We're gonna go ahead and move forward. We do have our City Managers' Report. We're on item number eleven. City Manager, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. You have in front of you your report, the Managers' Report, that touches on a number of things involving a quick update on the Alternate Response Work Group. That's a work in progress. That's also a mouthful. But stay tuned on that. Some nice updates from our Fire Department, including recognition of one of our firefighters who is retiring and some efforts by the firefighters of recent. An update on our, from our Police Department, which includes a number of topics, but also calls out with recognition, an award received by one of our officers and a heartwarming story, if you would like to give that a read. It's great to have these recognitions. I wish we can do more of it in this virtual landscape. This is, this is what we can do here at the very least. An update from Public Works. And since you were just chatting about it, a little bit of an update regarding the Jay Lively skating program and an update from sustainability. Finally, at the very end, we put in a blurb on the time for giving the Advent Box Program that was discussed last time. A little bit more information on that in the report for your reading enjoyment. Do you have any questions?
I see that there's a comment from Mr., from the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And you know, I just wanted to also echo what City Manager Clifton was talking about with Officer Zach Sires' life-saving work and that he, you know, just quickly arrived to a scene and just really helped treat a victim who who otherwise might not have been here with us today. And so Officer Sires, thank you. Chief Mussum, maybe you can relay that gratitude to that officer for his life-saving work and and appreciation from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was, those were nice comments. And also in the Department of Recognizing Employees, certainly our deep appreciation to firefighter Casey Cowboy Wood, who's retiring after twenty-five years. He brings, has brought to this organization not just his firefighting skills, but was a former police officer and a SWAT team member. And so a lot of career in the first responder profession and we're grateful for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move down to item number twelve. This is our COVID nineteen updates. I believe that we are going to be hearing from Ms. Anderson.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Evans. I am going to pull up our presentation for today if you give me just one moment. Can you see that all right?
Yes, we can.
Great. We'll be going over the updated data. We also will be hearing from Rose on what's occurring with the Navajo Nation and the Hopi Tribe with their data, as well as the Indigenous Nations' update. And then I have a brief update for you on various holiday activities that we're trying to focus on that are COVID safe. So for our data, week ending November twenty-first, sorry, let me move this out of the way. You'll see that we increased from two fifty-one, the previous weekend Flagstaff, to two hundred and eighty cases, week ending November twenty-one. Since then, this chart shows two hundred and two new cases in Flagstaff since November twenty-first. When I went to look at the Coconino County Health and Human Services site today, this number has increased to two hundred and twenty in Flagstaff with the additional test results they've received over the last couple of days. Our hospitalization among Coconino County residents remains higher within the last few weeks. As you might recall, week ending November fourteenth, where it has the thirty-five, that was twenty-five. So we're seeing an increased number of cases after the weekly reports have been published. But so far, week ending November twenty-first, we are at twenty-two cases that have resulted in hospitalization for Coconino County residents. When we look at COVID-related deaths, these are still remaining higher than usual. We had an uptick beginning mid-November, excuse me, mid-October, and that has continued, even though it's starting to come down. In our community transmission, our incident rate continues to be substantial with three hundred and seventy-six point four cases per hundred thousand. The percent of positivity has dropped to eight percent, so that's now in the moderate level instead of the substantial level. And the percent of COVID-like illnesses has increased to seven point one percent from five percent the previous week, but still remains at a moderate level. Our Arizona Department of Health Services dashboard does remain at the moderate level. It is data as of November eighth, twenty twenty. They are a couple of weeks behind intentionally to allow the testing results to catch up. When we are looking at Northern Arizona healthcare, the number of positive COVID patients increased from twenty-seven to thirty-six between the previous week and last week. When reviewing their website today, this number reflects thirty-four positive patients currently in Northern Arizona healthcare system at FMC. The number of new pending patients did decrease last week to thirteen. And when looking today, it does remain at twelve. So our hospital capacity has remained steady over the last couple of weeks. I will turn it over to Rose Togi so she can share information about our Navajo Nation.
Thank you, Shannon. Good evening and yada to Mayor and Councilmembers. Rose Togi, Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. As far as the data is concerned, we are in in the last five days since last Wednesday, when I reported the last numbers to yesterday. The the positive cases have increased on Navajo Nation in the amount of one thousand fifty-three. And then the death rate has also increased from from that time, at the same time period, by fifteen. Go ahead and go to the next one. As far as Hopi, their numbers have stayed, there were no updates in in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There have been some increases in the past six days from the seventeenth to the twenty-third. And so the negative, I mean, the positive cases are at thirty-three and of course, twenty, twenty-nine of those are members. And Hopi Tribe does not count any deaths in in any of their time periods. So this is the numbers as of the twenty-third and there were no updates as of yesterday. They remain the same. So I'm I'm assuming they're, usually their updated numbers occur on Wednesdays or Thursdays, depending on who's reporting either through the radio station or through to Tuvinia. Go ahead, next. And then as far as the Navajo Nation with the Indian Health Services on, and this is also in the report from last Wednesday. And according to the Navajo Nation Town Hall, it was reported that within three days, IHS and six thirty-eight hospitals have reached over eighty percent full on their ICU beds. This again is due in part to the rising COVID nineteen cases. And then on the, through a press release dated November twenty-fourth, it stated that on on the twenty-third, the Navajo Nation and the Office of the Controller has processed applications for more than two hundred and forty enrolled members of the Navajo Nation for the Navajo CARES Act Hardship Assistance Program. So these are the hardship assistance that are online portals where they were taking applications on both the Navajo Nation website and on at the website for the Office of the Controller. So the deadline was yesterday and they anticipate that they, that these payments will be made before the thirtieth of December. And the then the number remains the same as far, as far as the amount that has been allocated to hardship assistance. And that was increased from forty-nine million to ninety million for enrolled members of the Navajo Nation. And this could most likely grow if various allocated projects cannot be completed as projected. So they should have some updated numbers hopefully this week. As far as the Hopi Tribe is concerned, the only news that was different was that the Hopi as of the twenty-fifth last, last week, it, this is actually the the information that remains the same and there's really not no updates as of yesterday, where the Hopi tribal courts have remained closed due to prior COVID nineteen exposure and then issued the following statement on the twenty-third. And that was that the court building in the BIA building where staff were working was compromised as of last week and it was cleaned and disinfected, but there was there was, there, there is no in-person court services and the scheduled hearings will be, would be conducted remotely. And they are not sure when the court will be reopening. They don't have information, not available as far as positive cases as a result of the exposure. So those are the only things that I have for this week. And by Friday, I should have more updated information on the data and other things that are occurring on the nation and tribal lands. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose, for the update.
You're welcome.
So moving on to the holiday activities, some of the things that we wanted to share with Council as well as our community members is we have some pretty exciting window scenes that are going to be placed at the downtown library. And we also believe that we may be successful in putting those in some of the recreation centers to keep track of which recreation centers might have these displays. I've included the Facebook account link so folks can click on that in order to see updates on which recreation centers will have window scenes as well. If you love holiday lights, a great time to, if you're going on a walk or if you're driving by Wheeler Park and the downtown businesses are lit daily starting at five thirty PM. They went live just after the Thanksgiving holiday. And then there will also be an exciting virtual pine cone drop and firework display that will be shared over the computer for folks to be able to watch so they can still enjoy the holiday time. So those are some of the updates we wanted to provide to you this evening. Certainly available to answer any questions that Council may have.
I see that the Vice Mayor has a question for Ms. Togi.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Togi and Ms. Anderson for the update on on COVID. You know, every week that we talk about it, I find myself just continuously in shock by the numbers and and just extremely saddened, right? I refuse to get numb to the, to this virus and numb to the numbers. And and Ms. Togi, my question for you is, you know, I know you spend a lot of time listening in on conversations had by leadership on the tribes on a different, you know, tribe councils. What's the tone? What are you hearing? What are you feeling when you hear these leaders speak, assuming that you are listening to them? I'm just curious, you know, when we talk about the numbers, it's, it's, it's one message just conveyed, but what's, what's the energy like?
Well, I think the leadership, as far as Navajo Nation is concerned, which is usually the ones, the one that I listen to through their town halls or or through some of their messaging on their websites or or Facebook. Usually, they're very, very much Usually, they're very, very much trying to make sure that they are in keeping and trying to encourage people to do what they've been doing, especially during the summertime. They've done really well during that time. And then now is their second surge. And I think they're very positive in trying to deliver that message of trying, of making sure that they are still vigilant. And I'm sure everything wears on people just as it does on us as family members staying here at home and checking on our extended family members out on the nation lands. But I feel like the leadership are... They're really being very positive and really encouraging. And sometimes getting after the people to make sure that they don't let their guards down. And I know that because of flu season or whatever, and just the holidays, it's just so tempting. And I think that's what we're all kind of wrestling with as far as trying to keep people, keeping up their guard. But I'm really just... Can't commend the leadership enough for just being, trying to be examples in many cases. You know, that's all I can really say. I think that they're doing their best.
Thank you, Ms. Tohe, and thank you for helping to be that bridge between us and them. You know, I think we're all part of the same larger family, but I appreciate your work. And then my other comment to Ms. Anderson, you know, I'm glad he talked about New Year's and the virtual pine cone drop. That was something I was hoping to bring up tonight, too, is, you know, is there anything we should be talking about, council, in regards to New Year's? You know, Councilmember Asen had brought up Halloween a while back, right? You know, with New Year's on the horizon, is there something that we can do, or say, or push, or advocate that our community does to keep us all a little bit safer during the holiday season? I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to go to Ms. Wieland, then I'm going to go back to Ms. Anderson. Ms. Wieland?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this would be directed to our city manager. And the question is about, you know, as things pick up and we find that more of our nonprofits are under stress, financial stress, emotional stress, has there been any formal reach out to our tribal nations to help us financially with the care that continues to grow in our city in a way so we can make sure individuals who are coming off of the nations are well taken care of?
Thank you, Councilmember Wieland. I am not aware of any request or outreach to our indigenous neighbors to seek that kind of assistance. I'm just not aware of any programs that have gone in that direction, you know, outside, of course, of the CARES funding and some of the assistance that's coming in through state and federal sources, but not at the local level.
So I'm wondering, and again, not putting that on the nonprofits, but putting that on us as a city, if we could formally reach out to the nations and ask if they would be willing to help out in a way that they see fit. I believe the numbers, the money numbers exceed anything that we have seen. And perhaps that is already in discussion, and maybe, Rose, you can add to this conversation, if you even think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
I wanted to go back to Ms. Anderson, because I wondered if you could provide additional details with regards to this virtual pine cone drop. You know, the pine cone drop has been a signature event here in Flagstaff for decades, right? We're very grateful that the Weatherford has sponsored... Charlie's has sponsored this event. They started this event, I think it was like over 20 years ago. And we know that we usually get tens of thousands of people. And so I do see that Ms. Hanson is here. I really think that we need to just put a finer point on what we're talking about, about the fact that the roads are not going to be closed, that people are not encouraged to gather, because I think that goes to what the Vice Mayor is speaking to. And if there's a way that we can make sure that the message is out that, yes, it is happening, it's happening virtually, and we would like for people all over the world now, right? Because they'll be able to see it and experience, that they do so in a safe manner at home. Ms. Hanson?
Mayor, thank you for asking for further clarification. You'll find in your email later tonight that I had sent you two pictures of the Weatherford Hotel and what you'll see on each side of the hotel, facing Aspen and then facing, I believe, what is that, Beaver? Where we have three banners, and three of the banners are particularly there to give information to locals and to visitors that this is a virtual pine cone drop. And basically, the banner does say, it's in its 22nd annual, it's the Great Pine Cone Drop is virtual this year, tells them how to join. And then it does say gathering on the streets is prohibited, and we thank them. And then we also talk about how take out and settle in, because Flagstaff is known or has been recognized as the foodie town in Arizona. And then we end with, "After 2020, we all need..." And we kind of do a plan, words, a hug, or a huge New Year. And 2021, here we come. And each, on each of these banners, we're basically telling a story, how we wanted to bring this to them, but we will not be dropping that pine cone in real time. We will be offering a video of it dropping, and then following that, we will be doing the fireworks that Parks and Rec normally puts together. But we will be doing a firework show from that virtual experience as well. There's also a digital board in the center of all those banners that talks about the countdown to the New Year's, and it also says that it is a virtual event. And so we worked with Parks and Rec, we worked with PDD, and we worked with FIRE. And Interim Chief Muslman will tell you that one of the decisions was to not do any road closures, because if we did, it would give people the opportunity to gather on the streets, and that is exactly what we don't want happening. And I believe he is also going to have some police out there patrolling just to make sure that nobody's being unsafe and hanging out. Thank you, Mayor.
I do see the Vice Mayor. I wanted to add to this list of holiday activities. I had the opportunity to talk with Terry Medeska, who is with the Downtown Business Alliance, I believe it was last week. And they have over 100,000 lights. They have lit the downtown area to provide a nice walking type of a walking winterland, winterland, for lack of a better way of putting it. So while we also have the beautiful holiday lights in Wheeler Park, and they absolutely look amazing, definitely downtown, you can stroll with your mask on and socially distance and be a part of that winter wonderland as well. I know on the east side of town, it is lit up. We have the ornament at the corner of 4th and 66, as well as the tree that is put up by private businesses. So I'm going to go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and Heidi, thank you so much for your comments. Heidi, my thought is, I wonder if, you know, and correct me if I didn't hear you properly, but I'm wondering if we can, you know, maybe have a graphic that we can also print into a flyer, and then, you know, distribute it through the DVA, the chamber. You know, they could use our email listservs, they could use social media, and get it to the hotels and the bars as well to communicate about folks, their options on New Year's and what we're asking people to do. I just want to make sure we can get, we get the message out. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we are happy to do that. Jessica Drum is also putting it on the city website. She worked with our creative services manager, Ralph Schmidt, on that. And so I'm happy to do something else to get that out through the DVA. We are also happy to even place advertising digitally and in print, if you would like us to do that as well. These are not hard things to do, and we have contracts. So I'm happy to make sure that we get that message out as best that we can and continue to have everybody be safe. And I just wanted to make note in the chat box that when we're talking about holiday decoration, I was able to also get, years past, we had a ribbon, lit up ribbon art, holiday art that used to be on the corner of 4th Street. And then we had decided that the ornament that we put on 4th Street now was better suited for that location. So we actually stored that ribbon for a couple of years, trying to find a location for it. And this year, I was pleased to say that the mall has now installed that with the help of our city staff. And so we really feel like we're hitting all areas of town, like we promised you last year, to spread the love on the happy holidays and the lighting of our community. So I think that we're getting there piece by piece. But I will definitely work on getting the message out on this event and these other events, and we'll continue to report back.
And maybe we don't need, you know, physical flyers. Maybe we can utilize social media to the best of our ability. And I'm almost thinking, maybe we can, you know, work with the Weatherford and Sam, just because it seems like they might have a good platform that people look to for that pine cone drop to get that information out. But great work, and thank you.
Vice Mayor, last thing. Flagstaff Business News will be having an article on the pine cone drop and how it's changed this year to a virtual platform. So that will be coming out in their December issue as well.
I would like to see Heidi's team, Ms. Hanson's team, work on that social media in putting the word out and that type of advertising and marketing. I think that that would be a great idea.
And Mayor, and basically, the team already has it scheduled. So socially, we already have, so all social platforms. But what we do is we use a mix of five, and so we'll make sure that we incorporate some of these other ideas as well so that we can get to the masses, so no worries.
Mayor, a really quick follow-up. Heidi, I almost wonder if we can, you know, make this a challenge that we tie into the Flag Local campaign. You know, I had friends last New Year's that had their own pine cone drop, where they literally dropped a pine cone, and they did the countdown, and they posted it to social media. It was hilarious. And so I'm wondering if we can challenge our community to take a video of their own pine cone drop and upload it and use the hashtag. And then we can, you know, just kind of celebrate together, but all individually. And I think it'd be pretty hilarious.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is such a creative idea, and I will definitely share it with them in their production meeting tomorrow. And I'll let them all know that everyone can go to City Manager Clifton's house for the pine cones, since he seems to have a ton of them.
What if it wasn't limited to pine cones, though? What if the idea was to recognize the season that we're in? And so, and how we are celebrating that in a socially distance-conscious way within our little pods? So I mean, even pictures of Christmas trees or something. Maybe people who have lit their houses up, right? You know, there was a pet contest that was happening. They had a lot of dogs and very few cats, I just wanted to mention that. But maybe it's something like that as well. Show us your Christmas tree.
Mayor, I'm happy to take that idea as well to our team. And tomorrow, we do talk about our Flagstaff local campaign at each production meeting. And we'll be able to share with you all your ideas, and we'll get those going. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead then and move on to item number 13. Item number 13. Item number 13 is informational items report from council staff and future agenda item requests. I am going to go ahead and start with the Vice Mayor tonight.
Oh my gosh, well, you definitely caught me off guard, Mayor. I don't think I have much. Good meeting, everybody. You know, it was really great to meet the Colonel and her team today from the Army Corps of Engineers and walk the Rio with them and just talk about the plan moving forward. It was very inspiring, and it left me feeling very, very positive about the steps ahead and efforts ahead, because this is not a light lift or a small lift. But yet, a lift, I think, is happening and will continue to happen. So thank you, Team Flagstaff, for your work, and obviously, thank you to the Colonel and to BNSF for their partnerships. Other than that, you know, I just wanted, you know, let everybody know, like, be aware of your mental health. I've been talking to more and more people about mental health recently, and people are struggling. And so take a moment to check in with yourself. Don't forget to breathe, and then check in with your loved ones and your friends. There's a lot of great supports, virtual supports that are out there, and there's a lot of stigma to receiving those supports. You know, there's efforts like Stronger is One and other great programs in our community that are ready and willing to help, and, you know, people of all ages. But thank you, council, for a good meeting today. And, yeah, looking forward to the work ahead. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Aslan?
On behalf of my mental health and yours, I'm going to keep this brief. I don't have anything this evening.
Mr. McCarthy?
Probably even briefer. Thank you.
Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Only thing I did want to mention, I really wanted to thank those that decorated Wheeler Park and adding the blue tree. We've always had a blue tree in the past. I think it started with recognizing Officer Maritz from a long time ago. And then, of course, we're also recognizing Officer Stewart with the blue tree. And I really appreciate it for decorating a tree at Wheeler Park with blue and adding a little red trunk is a nice touch. So thank you for that, and see everybody next week.
Ms. Alice?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, today is Giving Tuesday. Donate and support your favorite local nonprofit. Thank you.
Ms. Wieland?
Oh my gosh, thank you, Mayor. I need to mention that I went to a meeting, the end of the season wrap-up. And, you know, Rebecca Sayer from Parks and Rec facilitated that meeting and did an absolutely beautiful job. And, you know, our entire staff just came together, Heidi, Trace, Lori, Rebecca, Andy, everyone was there and with such grace talked about where your partners, to the promoters of all our events, repeatedly asked, "What can we do for you? We have advertising, you can use, we'll help you with that." I mean, it really was outstanding, professional, outstanding. And I'll tell you, the first meeting I went to did not feel like this meeting. So that progression of community and partnership, I just want to shout out to all the individuals that were there and all of our promoters. So thank you so much. You know, I know I missed a few. Maggie was there. Maggie told me. So, you know, thank you.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me a little bit of time. I don't usually speak during this part of the agenda. But I just had a couple of quick things for council. Just a re- Uh but I just had a couple of quick things for council. Um just a reminder, if you hadn't seen my email yet today, um we are having an executive session tomorrow afternoon. It begins at three o'clock. Um you all should have a Teams meeting appointment from me, um so just an FYI on that. And my other item is um also in reference to an email that I sent earlier today. Um we are endeavoring to bring the uh reaffirmation of the Golden Rule City resolution um to council next week. And so I'm looking for any input that uh council may have on um updates to the existing resolution or um additions that they may like to see. If you can get those to me uh via email by uh Thursday, that would be very helpful as I will be crafting that um resolution to bring forward. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you so much.
Um, I just want to make sure that council knows that um our city attorney has been working with our clerk and this particular um e-session is very important. And so if we could all make time for that tomorrow, that would be appreciated. I'm gonna go to our city manager to see if there's anything left.
I think uh I've expressed everything in the chat column.
I want to remind everybody that everything in the chat column is subject to uh public um information request. I feel the need to make sure, including, yep. Blue Christmas and all.
I, I only said that to uh irritate our city attorney uh with, with, with fondness, of course.
Um, I wanted to.
Oh, I already reminded everybody in the chat that it's public record.
And it's not me who's getting in trouble.
That is duly noted, Mr. Aslan, duly noted. Um, and so I wanted to just make. I wanted to mention that um today we had the opportunity um to see a video about the Rio de Flag. Um, city staff uh revealed that uh for the, for the Colonel's visit and it was an amazing video that I really think should be on the city's website. Um, I'm not sure if it is, I couldn't find it, but if it could be posted so it could be shared, I truly think that that speaks to the heart of the issue that we see with the Rio de Flag. And that is all I have for tonight. Am I missing something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council, for a, a good and very uh meaningful meeting. We covered a lot of ground. Much appreciated.
We did. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. We will see you all tomorrow for e-session.